Welcome everybody. Our first order of business is approval on required plans, number four, but not today. My next order of business is approval of minutes. I'm told that minutes haven't finished yet, so we're racing right along. Our next order of business is to recess for public hearing on special permit application number 149-16, site plan review application to number 122-16, and inclusionary housing application, number 0916, start for five-story mixed-use building with retail commercial space on the ground floor along with related parking, utility, and landscaping improvements. This is at 480 and 482 Rantoul Street in Beverly. The applicant is Beverly Crossing 480 LLC. I have motion to recess for public hearing.
So moved.
Second in my plenary. Emotional motion, all favor. Chair votes in favor, motion passes. Now, public hearing. And I would ask the applicant to action to the little notice. I'm sorry. Come through.
Notice is hereby given under the provisions of Master Launch Act of forty-eight, section nine, and sections three hundred forty, C1, three hundred fifty-nine, E, three hundred ninety-eight, and three hundred one oh two of the Beverly zoning ordinance as reconnived in February two thousand sixteen. The Beverly planning board will hold concurrent public hearings on Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, during a public meeting that begins at seven p.m. in Beverly City Hall, one ninety-one Cabinet Street, Beverly, Mass., relative to special permit application number one forty-six sixteen, site plan review application number one twenty-two dash sixteen, and inclusionary housing application number zero-nine dash sixteen, for the construction of a mixed-use five-story building containing ninety residential units with retail commercial space on the ground floor, in which the residential use comprises more than seventy-five percent of the total floor area of the building. Relief is requested to reduce the required off-street parking expense reduced from one hundred and eighteen to one hundred and eight spaces. The petitioner is Beverly Crossing 480 LLC, Karen McGloskey and McGloskey, LLC, eighth Washington Street, Beverly, Mass. The owners, Ask and Investments LLC, Attention Roy Serpa, one twelve Elliott Street, Beverly, Mass. The property is located at 480, 482 Rantoul Street in the CC and IG zoning districts and is shown on accessories map twenty, lots one oh seven and one oh eight. The applications and plans are on file at the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review. John Thompson, Chair of course.
Thank you. Ms. Gooding.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Miranda Gooding. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant this evening. My address is McGloskey and McGloskey, Washington Street in Beverly. We have here this evening Christopher Copeland and also Kristen Coolman from Wendover Development, AKA Beverly Crossing, as she will appear tonight, Thad Samasco and John Harden from Samco and Berbridge, the project architects, Charlie Ware from Meridian Engineering, and Sam Brigorio from the Engineering Corporation, which is a traffic consultant for this project. Tonight, I'll just give you an overview of the presentation. This is a large building, a large project, and there is a lot of information to impart to the board this evening. We will provide, as preliminary matter, an introduction of the relief that's requested tonight, some background about the site, as well as a overview of the project briefly. And then, I think it's important for the board to understand, it's a process that has elapsed before we came here this evening, to show the project iteration and show the input that we've had. And then, we will, from there, go into a presentation from Chris Copeland, giving you an overview of Beverly Crossing and their considerations in designing this process and the building. Then we'll have a discussion regarding the design of the building itself, the site engineering, which Charlie Ware will take after the design discussion. We'll also discuss conservation commission issues with this project and some of the parking and site characteristics and accommodations on the site. And finally, we'll have a very brief presentation from Sam Brigorio from the traffic consultant on this project. After that, we would expect that to conclude our formal presentation of the project, including all of the relief requested and project description, and then we would have the team ready for questions as the board pleases from the board in the audience. So, as for the first order of business, it's just to explain that the applicant is this project. I know the board is used to seeing Wendover as the name of the project applicant. In this case, the applicant is Beverly Crossing 480 LLC, which is actually a joint venture between Wendover Development as well as an LLC called Ask and Investments, which the principals of that LLC are Roy and Bernard Serpa, who are longtime Beverly residents and business owners, and have owned this property since approximately nineteen ninety-seven. So, as you, as we explain this, I think it's important to know that this is not an outright sale of the property, it is something where the Serpas will remain in the project, but it will be managed as the other projects that Wendover has developed by Dolben Properties, the management company that handles the apartments. But the Serpas, who have unsuccessfully tried to sell this property for the past ten years, will be staying in this project, and that influences ultimately the design and the scope of this project as well. So, to start with the site, just to orient folks, and I'll do this very briefly. Along the right-hand side is Rantoul Street. This is a former Friendly's restaurant site, because everybody knows it perhaps best. The site is actually made up of two separate parcels, one just under an acre and the other just over an acre. In aggregate, the site is about eighty-five thousand square feet, and it has about two hundred and twenty-one feet of frontage along Rantoul Street. The site is ordered on one side down Rantoul Street, and toward the back of the site, and I will let Thad do a more detailed description of the site, but toward the back of the site, to orient yourself, is the MBTA right-of-way, and the train goes through the back of the site. There are other notable facts. There's a small, isolated wetland area in the south corner of the property, that as Charlie will describe, that has been taken into account to the project design, it will not be disturbed as a result of this project, and we are put forward conservation commission more than equals, commemorating easily with this process. As I said, the site was formerly operated as a Friendly's restaurant from approximately nineteen sixty-four to the early two thousands, when this location was closed. In two thousand seven, folks may recall, some of you may have been on the board at the time, the current owners approved for, excuse me, applied for and received approvals for a site redevelopment plan that consisted entirely of retail and commercial space. It was basically a retail plaza, as you can see here, with three separate retail slash office buildings, consisting in the aggregate of about twenty-one thousand square feet of space, and lots of parking, about one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces on the site. That project, though approved, has, was on the market and marketed as such for the bulk of the past ten years without any takers whatsoever. And although, granted, the timing of the approval was right around two thousand seven, early two thousand eight, and lots of things tanked at the time, there had been considerable efforts as the economy rebounded to get this project, to have, to have others have interest in redeveloping this project, and that did not happen. Moving forward, after the approvals, actually preliminary site work and building demolition began, so the building, the existing Friendly's building was demolished, and the site, as you know, is now clear, and has remained vacant since then. So, this next slide, and you have this in your packet, is a rendered site plan for the proposed project. And what you can see very briefly is that this will be an L-shaped building situated along Rantoul Street for the bulk, for the shorter, the shorter portion of the building, with the length of the L being situated off of Rantoul Street. The site will be also developed with parking to support the use. This is proposed to be a five-story building, mixed-use building containing ninety residences and approximately nineteen hundred square feet of retail slash commercial storefront. The board will recall that this is in the CC zoning district, and as such, there are no dimensional or area requirements other than frontage, a minimum of fifty-five feet of frontage, and the height limitation of fifty-five feet. And this building will comply with both of those requirements. In addition, for the parking, the commercial parking requirement is seven spaces for this use, and all of those seven spaces, as you will see as we go through the project plans, will be accommodated by on-street parking, which is allowed under the zoning ordinance, as long as it's serving the commercial use. The relief requested for this project basically is site plan review, and we have two special permit requests. One is the request to allow a building in the CC district, which is of mixed use and where the residential use comprises more than seventy-five percent of the building, which is the case here. This is an important topic that we understand on the team, that we will be discussing with this board this evening. As you know, all of the mixed-use projects that Wendover's developed before have all required special permits, so this project is not different in that regard. As I think you will see, there has been a considerable amount of thought in the design of this building, both its architectural design and its programmatic design, and I will let Chris Copeland share with you some of his thinking about that. But essentially, even though about a third of the frontage along Rantoul Street will be dedicated to commercial space in this project, because of the size of the site, the depth of the site, and the height of the building, that boils down to about two percent of the overall gross square foot area in the building being reserved for resident, excuse me, for commercial use. We think that's an appropriate size for this project. That translates to roughly the size of the Atomic Cafe site, for those of you familiar with that site. Not an insignificant new commercial space, particularly for a building, for a, for this section of Rantoul Street, with the previous submit. The other special permit that we will require is a special permit to reduce the parking for the residential use. The actual required parking under the zoning ordinance would be one hundred and eighteen spaces. That translates to one parking space for each of the one-bedroom units, and there are sixty-two one-bedroom units proposed, plus two spaces for each of the twenty-eight two-bedrooms. We're proposing to reduce that number by ten to one hundred and eight spaces, which translates to a difference of about one point two spaces per unit compared to the one point three spaces required if the zoning, the zoning ordinance ratios are applied. This request, as you'll hear, is spurred by several practical considerations. Number one, we have an abutter at the commercial condominium to the rear of the property who has asked for accommodations to allow an existing business to continue. That business encroaches somewhat, or doesn't encroach, but the turning radius that's required to access that business would require access on our property. And Wendover has worked with the property owner to accommodate an easement post-development that would allow that access to continue, and that has impacted the amount of parking that can be required, that can be available on-site. There are two other items. One is that it's trying to thoughtfully place on the site the national grid generator, and Chris and Charlie can speak to that as well. The other consideration is that we had some requests in parking and traffic to reorient the flow of traffic on-site, and we thought that we could do that. It did require the elimination of a couple of parking spaces. Those are the practical reasons for it, and then the other considerations are that, based on both data compiled by the traffic consultant, the city of Beverly, and by Wendover, based on its actual management of buildings in this area within proximity to the MBTA, what all of these sources are finding is that really what's required is much less than what the zoning requires, and it's more along the lines of one space per unit as opposed to one space per bedroom. As it is, we are just under one space per bedroom, at point nine per bedroom for this proposal. So, those are two special permit requirements, or two special permit applications. The final piece of relief that we require is, and it's not really relief, but there is a, an affordable housing or an inclusion housing, inclusionary housing application submitted with your package. Based on the number of units proposed for this project, twelve percent of the units have to be inclusion units, and that translates to eleven. The application before you presents our compliance with that, with those requirements, and eleven of the units proposed would be permanently restricted as affordable rental units. That translates to two of the two-bedroom units and nine of the one-bedroom units proposed, so they would be evenly distributed or threw out the one and two bedrooms. They would also be evenly distributed throughout the floors of the building, with the exception of the fifth floor, which is much smaller than the other floors. Four of the inclusion units, which are proposed to be handicapped accessible, and these are all outlined, the locations of them on the plans in your package, and you'll also be able to refer to them later on in the presentation. But essentially, the application complies with the requirements of the zoning code with respect to inclusion during units. I will just note briefly that in the application, we've requested permission from the board to approve this application, but to also acknowledge that in the future, we may very well wish to find off-site inclusionary housing instead of onsite for this project. There are a number of reasons that that may end up to be a reality, and the, we understand that the board requires compliance as of the date we apply. If there is a site that we have control over in the future, such that we could relocate units to that site, we'd like to preserve the right to come back to the board and ask for special permit at that time. We're not asking you to act on that, we're just trying to preserve the right. The reason for that is that Wendover is working in the community with a number of partners, and has been exploring the possibility of doing a larger affordable housing project in the city with one of those partners. That has not come to fruition yet, but if it were, we'd like to give the board a heads-up that we may be not asking for consideration at that time. Just finishing up on the affordability, the rents are expected to be, based on current rents, approximately thirteen hundred eighty-seven dollars per month for one bedrooms, and approximately sixteen hundred fifty-seven dollars for two bedrooms. That's based on eighty percent AMI figures as of two thousand sixteen. So, I think, as you'll hear from tonight, the team understood that this project is a large project, it's a large building, it's a large site, and the team sought public input early on in this process from a variety of sources. So, you should know that in early March, we began this process with the city planning project review, and we also met with neighbors in early March and invited all of the abutters to a meeting. We had about twenty residents come out at the time, so there was very good attendance and a great discussion. A number of city councilors, including the board councillor and latter, were in attendance at that meeting as well. The next thing we did is we went to both Parking and Traffic and Design Review Board on an informal basis. With respect to Parking and Traffic, we asked input early on for the scope of the traffic study, to make sure that, that all of the answers were presented to the board, and in fact, they suggested that we go back and supplement the traffic study, which we did. We also went to Design Review Board informally, and I can tell you that the project that Design Review Board saw in the beginning, and what you're going to see this evening, are very different, and I think that the informal check-in worked out very well in this case with the project, with some significant benefits coming as a result of that really check-in. We also benefited from an early meeting with Beverly Main Streets, we went to that board and got some, some very constructive advice on how the building, in particular, would relate to Rantoul Street from a pedestrian perspective, and there were a number of changes that were made based on that check-in, which complemented really nicely the meeting with the Design Review Board. As a result, when we finally went back to Parking and Traffic and the Design Review Board earlier this month, we received letters of recommendation that were relatively, with the Design Review Board, there were no conditions on that recommendation, they recommended approving the design of the project, and Parking and Traffic approved the project with some minor conditions, all of which are satisfactory to the, to the applicant, and which we would happily abide with. So, we've come a long way. What we have left, we have a conservation commission, which as I mentioned, we are midway through that process, so actually, more than midway, hope to be wrapping up with that this month. And I think the only other thing to highlight, because the board will have a copy of the city engineer's comment letter, which was, which was lengthy, there were a lot of comments and sort of suggestions, more so than requested changes, actually, and Charlie Ware will explain that he's had conversations with the engineer and made a revised submittal earlier today. We feel that, and we don't have that with the board this evening, but I think, as Charlie will say, all, there were very, very minor changes to the plan that is before you, and we would be happy to, to agree to abide by any of the conditions in that engineer's letter as a condition of approval. So with that, I think, thank you for your time, and turn it over to Chris Copeland to give you the overview.
Thank you. Miranda. Chris Copeland, Wendover Development, I'm the Vice President of Operations. You heard from Steve Dodge back in January, he would have been here tonight, he had a medical appointment, couldn't escape, so you get me tonight. I just want to say a few words about the company and this development in particular, and I know I have received, since I've been with Wendover, several questions about what is Wendover doing, what's the broader vision, and I'm going to try to address some of those questions as quick as I can, some material to go over. So, Beverly Crossing, Wendover Construction and Wendover Development were one and the same. As of last summer, we separated out. Wendover Construction's a very good viable construction manager, they're building six projects for us now, but because of that separation, we feel right now is a good time to introduce Beverly Crossing and that new brand for what we are doing in Beverly. So, we came up with this name, we think it represents, obviously, I hear, awesome what we're doing in Beverly, but also speaks to its future, its potential, everything that we see, that it has to offer, being a great city. I just wanted to read real quick our mission statement that we came up with. So, Beverly Crossing is a locally focused real estate developer with a singular purpose, create communities that will attract new residents, businesses, and services to Beverly, spurring economic growth, and contributing to the city's revitalization and transformation. I really wanted to point out just a couple of things in this statement, that it's not just about housing. Our business is really oriented around housing and creating housing, but we know businesses and services are a big part of that. So this is the name that we see in the future of Beverly Crossing. Wendover Development is still a legal entity, technically, it's the parent company to this, it's the brand, but this is what you'll see forward-facing from here. So, real quick on the broader vision, I'm not a planner, this is not approved, yeah, should I speak again? This is not approved by Aaron, this particular diagram, I'm not a consultant, per se, but I just wanted to try to address the broader vision of what we see inside our shop and what we're trying to do, and tie it back to the context of 480, Rantoul Street here today. So, we're focused on housing. We think we can create a bit of an urban living experience here in the suburbs. I think people read a lot about what's happening in Boston, skyrocketing rents, luxury developments, C-Corp, those kinds of things, which is great, but it's pushing people up to the edges, and we feel there's no better place to address housing and a warm and urban experience than a place of Beverly. So, because of the geography and demographics, our focus is on the depot core, and this diagram recognizes what we feel are three significant cores. So, the depot core is what we're kind of focused on. Cabinet, fantastic core, arts, culture, I put down there's a lot of shopping and eating, obviously a well-established core, theater, those kinds of things. Coming Center, a great core of commerce, has a very good regional draw, wide-ranging, I think that's why Starbucks is over in this area, big grocery stores, McDonald's, but it's nonetheless a very core draw. 480, I think, is a nice situation between all these, and if we can work to develop this depot core, we feel it's going to have as equal a draw to residents that live and work in this area. So, it's hard to see right now, and I think part of this chicken and egg situation is that, when we talk about retail on the outer edges of this particular core, I think it's important to recognize, when Enterprise has six hundred square feet of retail, and Burnham has no retail, that you get further out, we still recognize we need retail at 480, but we want to put more in the, in the core here, and we have illustrated that in one thirty-one Rantoul Street in particular, and other future projects that I think can speak to a little bit about today, but I just wanted to recognize that this core, we know needs more retail, it has the opportunity for more retail, and we're going to put that there, and we're committed to that. 480, again, being further out, I think nineteen hundred square feet is the right, that's the right number for that. I have a couple of slides about density and retail as well. So, campus economics, just real quick, what that means is that this, this diagram doesn't really work with one building managed by one company one at a time. This works in this scale because we can create multiple buildings managed by one company, Dolben, highly professional company, that manages all of these, and we can hopefully bring our expense ratio into a place that has, that generates good economics. But in and of themselves, these projects generate roughly what prevailing cap rates are. I don't want to get into all that too deep, but just to say that the economics have to work, the rents do stratify, there are higher rents in the depot area, we know that, they're higher at Enterprise than Burnham. higher at Enterprise than Burnham, and we feel that four eighty here can generate rents similar to Burnham, maybe even a little bit less, and we're projecting that, which gives to the campus economics and the scale of what we're talking about today. Long-term understanding and partnership, this wouldn't happen without talking to the city, talking to residents, having our neighborhood meetings, or about this broader vision in incorporating other residents and businesses in the area. So the bottom lines, we think quality housing will demand this retail and service. One thirty-one, again, our commitment to this depot core is illustrated in this kind of project, they're up to the fourth story in the elevator right now, it'll be done in spring seventeen, lot of retail, sixty-five hundred feet. We don't think this language, that this type of development is what's right for four eighty, I'll get into that, and that can go over some of the design that we've incorporated into that, but I just wanted to illustrate that this was just approved, it's going up, and we're pretty proud of this goal. So retail snapshot, I counted from the wireless store at the south end by the bridge, all the way to the Burger King, ninety-one retail spaces. The message here in this graph is right here, there's sixteen of those units, either of those ninety-one are vacant or planned for the future, I put two at one thirty-one and one at four eighty as the future planned units, the rest of those sixteen are vacant. The other ones are restaurant, Pickle Onion, Jacob's Pub, those kinds of things, restaurant, food service, and then you get into salons, barber shops, personal services, and then auto and car related, Jiffy Lou, the Ford dealership, those are all there now. So I just wanted to point this out, that there is quite a bit of vacancy on Ran Tool Street, we intend to create actually more future spaces, I think this graph will shift, and you might see more groceries, maybe more fitness centers, maybe things like that, we're not sure, but it was an interesting graph to count that, and again, commitment to doing more of the core is the focus. So how do we look at the four eighty site as developers? It's two acres, it's vacant land, it's been vacant for thirty years now, a long time, but it's, look at where it's centered, six tenths, seven tenths of a mile from both train stations, great location, we feel the draw will be obviously to the depot. Permanent strip mall was never built, we think this is the right development to put housing here, because there's fewer and fewer opportunities at this scale on Ran Tool Street, they just won't come up of this size anymore or often, so this one, I think, is an appropriate use to put housing in some retail, and we think the zoning encourages that. So what was the design charge to the team, what were we thinking about when we came up with this? We thought about quality, we needed to be better than Burnham and Enterprise, we knew we had to improve on that, we know there's some shortcomings there. We wanted fresh, something fresh looking, we didn't want another red brick and hardy sided box, I don't think that language works here, like Miranda said, it has less context for a five-story building on this end, but we needed to provide that context, and it needed to be fresh for the human scale, there's two-story language down in that area, we needed to keep that language, I thought that was important, and that'll go into that. We wanted a building that did engage the street, that wasn't pulled back with trees and you couldn't see it, or parking and that kind of thing, we wanted to engage the street, we wanted the retail to be bright, glass, we needed some greenery, we wanted the units to be on the street. Enterprise doesn't have it, Burnham doesn't have it, but there is a lot of that on Ran Tool Street, so we just thought that was important to do. So density, ninety units is a lot of units, we get that, but it's a big site, and it's hard to read those numbers, but all I did was I took eleven buildings around the city, looked at how much land they're situated on, and how many units are on that parcel, and this is four eighty, right here, this is where it fell, it's actually forty-six units per acre, that's what we're talking about today. Only thing smaller than that is Edwards Condos and two forty-five Elliot Street, which is this parcel, it's sixty-two units on like four acres over here, but if you look, everything else is denser when you look at units per acre. Jaclyn Tower, big tower, right in the core, one hundred and eighty-five units per acre is what that is, basically a hundred units on a half an acre. So when you start to plot it out, I think four eighty, and when you talk about ninety units, it, not only is it not very dense relative, relatively speaking, but I think it's appropriate for the parcel. So that's just a quick snapshot of how we look at it in Beverly Crossing. I'm going to turn it over to that, thank you.
Good evening, that's Masco Smat, Herbridge Architects in Beverly. As Chris pointed out, the site is central between the Beverly Depot and Montserrat Station. Sometimes when you live in an area and look at things long enough, you don't actually see them anymore, so I thought I'd just update you a little bit on the context, this of course is this looking at the site with your back to it, across, looks like a beautiful spring meadow now, but usually it's a little more weed filled in the summer. As you look north, there are, on the right side, are some very nice two-story, well-maintained two-and-a-half story homes. In the distance here, Mr. Britton's has a blockhouse, and there's a home right there. If you turn clockwise around the site, there are a couple sort of destination commercial spaces, a hair salon and Dr. Clark's opto...optometry? There are some more unfortunate uses, the Jiffy Loop here, which is right, pretty much across the street with a very broad curb cut. And as you look south, there's the Britton Auto Parts Store and Warehouse, and then a little bit in the distance is the CVS, the gas station. One of the highlights is the Joe's Drum Shop and the Carpet Store, address the street nicely, it has a nice retail feel to it, it's actually close to the street, and so a bit of that broke out. And the bank here does a nice job of sitting on the street and addresses the street properly. The CVS is a sort of a building a little bit in jail behind the barrier of the fence and barrier of parking around it, and as you come, turn around a little further to gas station, and then ultimately come to Michelle Building Home here, and then this is our proposed project. So as Miranda mentioned, it's a five-story building, it has a two-story cornice that runs across here, the nineteen hundred square feet of commercial spaces is located on this corner. There are residential units that address the ground here, that have little small front yards that open right out onto Ran Tool Street, and I will get into more of the design detail in a second, but we understand it is a large building, it anchors that end of Ran Tool Street, there's a paramount of density in twelve buildings on the other end, and this is for us sort of a punctuation mark on the end of Ran Tool. We recognize that it's seen from a bunch of different advantages, and we looked at all of those as we considered the design. This is on top is the Ran Tool Street elevation, it's essentially, it is a pretty symmetrical building, but the ground level does feature three almost individual buildings that are masonry with awnings, and there's a second tier of projected parts of the building, I'll show you in a second, that give it another layer of texture, and then in the back, furthest back, is a fairly very simple white or off-white plain building. It is fifty-five feet to the cornice, the zoning allows a four-foot parapet, which is employed, probably use about three of that feet to articulate and help sort of define each of these lifts. Some of the two ends have a balcony that projects forward, and then these are more of a smaller projection, that's sort of what they call a Juliet balcony coming forward. As you turn, as you look at the building on the left side, coming, this is the retail space that's here, turns the corner and comes back, our residential entrance, one of them is here for the residents. The building has this kind of standard lift here, that we've drawn a very strong line here, and then this section here actually sets back in some, and then come back out with the rest of the leg of the L. Can use this language of these frames, which are actually of brushed metal against the backdrop of a stucco color, which is the white, and even employed some interesting metal panel features, which is sort of, which shows up as the blue here. So from the street, if you're standing on the street, the masonry section, the two-story masonry section is sixteen feet away from you. The main building, the remaining three stories are twenty-two feet away from you. The sidewalk is eight feet, which means that this building, this face that's closest to you is eight feet further away from the edge of the sidewalk, which allows us to do some landscape, plus that you have an outdoor cafe kind of user in this space. The nineteen hundred square feet, as was mentioned, is about, about the size of the atomic, it's also according to the assessments record, about the size of the cafes or restaurants, so it could give you a sense of the scale of the building. So this section here, we have balconies, and we're seventeen feet back from the curb, and then further, and then this, so this line here reads as a two-story line, and then the building sets back further still. So we're trying to articulate, from a pedestrian on Ran Tool Street, feeling like you're next to a two-story building, and then this building's set further back is the remaining three stories, with a secondary tier of these frames as well. We don't, as was mentioned, we don't think this is a red brick and cast stone kind of aesthetic on this end of the street, we think a more modern, frankly, more like almost industrial kind of look makes sense, we think the masonry does have a sturdiness to it that is helpful in defining that edge. So this is a look at the materials, if you go back, these frames here are all of a smooth metal panel design. The masonry, which is here, has a darker base and some highlights, and then a field color, so the field color is that, that's the base, and those are the highlights. So again, we think a pretty interesting color palette and texture palette. The corrugated metal would be a softer blue color like this, it makes interesting shadow lines. There is some corrugated metal, has a break in here, which is this sort of off-white color, and the stucco won't be jet, super jet white, but sort of a softer white, that is the synthetic stucco color, that's sort of the upper three-story parts of the building. If you look at it from the right side, the masonry turns the corner, then a stair tower happens, and again, the building is this wide, is what you see coming down Ran Tool heading towards Salem, and then well back, because of the L shape, is the balance of the building, and it's kind of a nice little courtyard in here, which we showed on the site plan. From the rear, from the, looking at it from a train, you see this width here with these frames and the stair tower, and then again, quite a bit further back, set well back is the, is the balance of the leg of the L, with that courtyard I mentioned kind of in this spot. So we're using the same vocabulary we used on the front. As we turn around the back, the masonry, the masonry tends to go away, and then these frames start to develop, to give us some depth and some interest in the building. In terms of the site plan, to start with the traffic flow, there's a one-way in and a one-way out, and there's a fairly direct in and out route like that, which is helpful for fire apparatus and safety apparatus, and then, as was mentioned, you can come in here, and you can now get, originally we had to not being able to get through here Parking Traffic, that's why we do that, so we lost a couple of spaces to do that, but it seemed worthwhile, so it's less of a jam situation. The industrial condominium is here, and the owner has a tractor, a part of a tractor trailer, which is a tractor part that he likes to get in through the side door, and that's why we had originally had these spaces coming back here, so we gave up a few spaces to allow that access to happen. We also gave up a few spaces, as I mentioned, to have that flow-through happen, and then last, we gave up a few spaces so that the national grid transformer and our generator would not be on the street surrounded by the sixteen required ballers, it would be off the street, it could be fairly low screen. So that's why we're at one hundred and ten spaces and not one hundred and eighteen, we physically can fit one hundred and eighteen, but felt that given the actual counts of the residents using the Beverly Crossing building, it's now that this was an appropriate amount of parking to provide, and it gave us a little better lead. As was mentioned, and Charlie mentioned, the Conservation Commission is working with us on how to handle this sort of isolated kind of wet spot that lives right here. There are accessible parking spaces, two here and three here, so the end, the main residential entrance to the building is coming down the sidewalk here and here, and also coming in from this side, this kind of courtyard I mentioned, this position here. The units at a ground level that can have a reasonably nice access to the outside in the small outdoor area that has been provided, and though, and then there are most, not every unit has a balcony, but many units have balconies, but it's about fifty percent, I'd say. The site is fairly well landscaped along the perimeter, the railroad tracks are here, and that's, again, the industrial condominium is here, there's a fairly large tree here, I think we're showing fencing and some arbor by in that, in those very narrow spots, as well as a hedge here along the industrial block buildings there. So the layout in terms of parking with space inside, so it conforms to the zone. There are, in the package, is a plant schedule, I think I counted seventy trees going in and a hundred shrubs, we're trying to use a natural fence and guardrail, there's a bike rack shown in that courtyard area, these light fixtures are the same ones we had used at one thirty-one Ran Tool and McKay School, they're cut-off type fixture, twenty foot high, they'll show up on the site plan, I kind of yellow them out here. So there's some site lighting for safety around the perimeter of the property, there's not a lot of lighting exposed to view on the building, it's underneath camp, most, every door has a covered entrance, and so the lighting is located up in that cover, so as not to produce undue glare. This is a cross-section through Ran Tool Street looking north, this is our building, where they mentioned that there's an eight-foot sidewalk, the eight-foot setback, and a majority of the building is back another six feet. The plan, and then on the other side is the typical kind of two-and-a-half story building with a sidewalk. So what we're doing is taking, so in plan here, the way the state works, it's sort of a three-foot furniture row that contains the trees, the meters, the light posts, the signs, those kinds of things, and then there's a five-foot walking path, and from that path, we're taking off a route at the retail section, commercial section, we're putting in pavers, so it's fully paved, there's some planters, clean planters with some plants scheduled at year and soften it, we're hoping that retail, maybe restaurant, usually will take advantage of this fairly generous space that they have here, with six feet here and another, I think, five or six feet here, fairly good size. Then the residential units each have their own fenced area, an iron kind of fence with a little bit of a place for a table and an entrance path in, and then between each of the units is a landscape zone, so we're hoping that this will be an active living area on the street, again, with what would feel like a two-story height of the cornice, and then there are canopies that help with the pedestrian scale anything. This is from the state's website, and this is kind of that three-foot zone that I'm speaking of, and the five-foot walkway, and our building is kind of sort of about where this building shows up on this photo, and the plan is in fact for them to have differentiation between the furniture zone and the walk zone. This is another photo from the site, this is the site related to the Ran Tool Street improvements, which shows kind of apparently the light fixtures and trees that they're going to use on the walkway, and our building is probably, again, fairly close to this, there's room in it for some plants in that, in that zone. So this is the first floor plan, as was mentioned, there are ninety units, twenty-eight one bedrooms, sixty, I'm sorry, ninety units, twenty-eight twos, sixty-two ones, eleven are inclusionary, and there are actually five accessible, and three of those, five are in the inclusionary count, you'll see the accessibility symbol in the accessible units, and the shading refers to which units we think are slated to be inclusionary. We have this nineteen hundred square foot commercial space you mentioned, and then the residential entrance is coming in on either end as well as from the back. Typically, the two bedrooms are on the corners, where we got a lot of good white light windows, and the one bedroom should stretch across the middle, as you can see, on this plan, the central elevator core. And the one bedroom should stretch across the middle, as you can see on this plan, the central elevator core. The one-bedroom units are in the range of seven hundred and fifty square feet. Two-bedroom units are in the range of a thousand and fifty square feet.
Can you move back?
Sure, of course.
What are the square-ish ones, the square-ish unit right behind the retail space? What's that?
That is the gymnasium.
Hopefully our gym for the residents.
Went up further right?
Lounge. That's a lounge space. And there's an auto, semi-automatic middle room. So the amenities you'd expect, and these spaces do lead to activity on, you know, coming and going to the building. Retail and commercial spaces are the only thing that generates, you know, people and activity on a street space. So our footprint's eighteen hundred square feet. As a way of, this is a typical floor plan, but as a way of thinking about how big the building is. The enterprise, our frontage on Rantoul is a hundred and forty-five feet. The enterprise building's frontage on Rantoul is a hundred and seventy-nine and the Burnham is a hundred and eighty-four. So it's shorter than both of those, just to give you a sense of it. As was mentioned, the longer leg of the L heads back into the site and more to our view. And if I dare go back to the site plan. When you, the parking lot is here is very well hidden by trees and by the building. We don't think that this parking lot would be quite apparent to the passerby. In fact, you're going to see lots of building. The retail commercial space that was originally approved had two small ends of a building right on the street, yes, but had a sixty-five-foot parking lot and a twenty-four-foot road, you know, taking up almost eighty, ninety feet of that frontage. Whereas we're using twenty-foot one-way drives, so trying to really maximize the building frontage on the street. Just for analysis, we looked at, you know, and said, well, if we have a baseline four-story building, what kind of buildings are on Rantoul Street? You know, how many, how big are they? And we kind of went through the grandeur. I remember our six stories, five stories. One thirty-one Rantoul you see here is four, oh, it's actually five, sorry, five. And working our way around. And we kind of plotted them here and said, okay, so we have down this end of Rantoul with the depot being about here. Down this end of Rantoul, there's a fair amount of these taller buildings and then they kind of work their way out. And then we're here and maybe we could really be that punctuation mark at the end of the sentence. There are some sites on Rantoul, of course, that are able to be developed with buildings like this. But to aggregate a large site and let's say buy out the eye doctor and the hairdresser and try to get that, that just, the economics aren't, are not there. So I don't think there's a danger of this becoming this corridor of fifty-five-foot buildings, both sides tied to the street. And frankly, the street's wide enough to support that if it did. But I just don't think that that's going to be happening. So here we are. That's, we think, we worked hard on the building with the design review board's input. The planning department had a lot of the input. Every main street's had a lot of the input. Everybody's an architect and that's not necessarily a bad thing. We embrace the ideas and we think we've produced here a building that is thoughtful to the area and a real asset to the city that I live in Morgan. And with that, I think Charlie, you're up.
Can you move back to your side? Feeling which one builds the light?
The middle.
The middle? Good evening. For the record, my name's Charlie. We're Meridians Associates and I was a civil engineer that directed the design, the site design of the project. I'll start with the utilities, except for the drainage. I'll finish with the drainage. The utilities exist out of Rantoul Street. There's many water, sewer, gas, electric telephone cable are all readily available on Rantoul Street. With the work that's ongoing on Rantoul Street right now, we've actually moved ahead and taken the liberty to put this stuff for water and sewer or in the center, this stuff for gas over here and not gas, electric. And I believe there's a gas line installed on this side as well. And that was done with the knowledge that they'll probably finish this street up. Hopefully they'll finish it up. We'll see how they do it. Finish the street up before we get into full-blown construction on this. So that's the utility piece, very simple. The drainage, the history of this site is there used to be a stream that used to run through here. And sometime, it was either in the late sixties, early seventies, this was filled in, actually predated the friendlies being on the site. But it was filled in and it was a cauldron. I think it's a forty-inch cauldron which runs through the site. And the friendlies was constructed in this area. What you see today is, as Thad pointed out, it's almost like a field of grass growing up right now. But right about it here, there's a significant drop. It's pretty flat. And it does drop slowly from Rantoul Street to here. And then there's a quick drop, actually even in this area, right over around that area. It drops almost probably eight to ten feet. And the site is almost all fill. It was, when we did the soil testing, we found that the site historically was relatively level. There's probably ten to twelve feet of fill out here in the front and it's about three, three or four feet in the back when it finally drops off. Get to this wetlands. This is a small wetland pocket. There probably was a large wetland area here forty, fifty years ago before it was filled in. This is a little pocket that was left in time. It is what's called a non-jurisdictional wetland or an isolated wetland. It's non-jurisdictional from the standpoint of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. However, that only has a local ordinance. And if you're over two thousand square feet of wetlands, whether it's connected or not connected, by being connected, it means that does it flow to a, does water in it flow to another wetland down grade? In this case, that's not the case. That doesn't happen. So it is isolated. However, it is protectable under the wetland's ordinance. And we have filed with the Conservation Commission. We actually have met with them. We met with them several times before we filed, just to get a sense of other different ideas that we could, things we could do with this wetland. It's agreed by the commission that it's currently a very low-functioning wetland. It's left behind. Unfortunately, it's where it's completely, there's a dwelling and a gas station. And in this area, there's the industrial condominiums. And of course, this vacant site, which is around, but vacant site is not habitat. It's in fact, this rear portion is gravel and the front portion is, you know, grass has sprung up there. But it certainly is not, and it's not, it's more of an urban environment than a rural environment. So there's not a lot of habitat opportunities for what's there now. In addition to that, we analyzed what was growing down in there. And there is wetland vegetation. However, the site, this area has been taken over with invasive species pretty heavily. Given that, we worked with the commission and floated a lot of ideas with the commission about how best to handle it. We actually are proposing to do, to really clear out a lot of the invasive species and replant this with more natural species, the species that would be more conducive to creating a wildlife habitat in that area. As a trade-off on that, the commission is, you'll notice these dense lines here. These are actually topographic lines. There's actually a pretty good drop from here to the wildland, just about ten to twelve feet there. Under ordinary conditions, the commission has a twenty-five-foot no-disturb zone, which you like to stay out of. However, that no-disturb zone is already been so, you know, worked over, this sumac and there's nothing really very good growing in there. So we're going to replant that area. And the trade-off of the commission is that they'll allow us to do that grading. And we could certainly introduce a wall in there and avoid that. But the commission has been amenable to the idea of not doing a wall and putting a, you know, a sloped area that's planted out with habitat-friendly species planted. We have a meeting with the commission Tuesday night, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's next week. At the last hearing, I think they were happy with the design. They were waiting on the review, the city engineers' review of the drainage, which I'll get to next. But I think that, I think we're in the, in fact, I spoke with Amy Maxner this afternoon, this morning, this afternoon. And she thought that, she had seen Greg's letter, which I'll get to next, and felt that once we addressed that, that we were in a position for approval from the commission next week. I had met with Greg St. Louis on this project to go over both of that. He sat in his office and went over these items even before he issued his letter. So I had a pretty good idea of what was in it. I won't go over every single item. A lot of the things are almost editorial. The first note, for example, is clarifying that, and I'm not sure why he put it in there, but clarifying why there were no state fees for the Conservation Commission on this because it's not a state filing. There's only fees under vocal commission. So there was a lot of comments in this. I think it's a total of like thirty-six comments. I'd say probably ten of those are more editorial-type comments of clarifying how we're doing things and why we're doing them. Probably most important to him and to myself as a design engineer, was this cauldron that runs through the site. That cauldron has had a history of back enough and having problems with drainage in that area. Back, I think in the late nineties, early two thousands, this cauldron was actually replaced as part of the, as part of the previous retail development that was proposed here. And it actually, instead of running through the site in this location, it now runs out over here and back into the site and then down again. And it runs all the way down to Elliott Street, empties out into the drainage system in Elliott Street. So what we did is to mitigate as much as we could for the impacts on that path to that pipe, which has, I've seen videos of it being overwhelmed in larger storms. We have, with the introduction of a failing large amount of impervious surface, we introduced, and this area doesn't show on this plan, but in this area is a large underground infiltration system. And there's also another infiltration system in this location. What we found, and this is, I guess, the lucky part, we always look for something that, how am I going to solve this? How am I going to do it? The top of the site is all this fill material. So it's fairly, it's fairly dense. It's referred to as C-type soil. There's A, B, C, and D-type soils, D being the worst and A being the best. A is sandy soils and C-type soils are better than clay, but not as, not as good as the sand. So the site is really covered with C-type soils and very little vegetation. So there's a fair amount of runoff that comes off the site today. Of course, if we just completely covered it with pavement, there'd be even more runoff that came off the site. Plus the, plus the water quality of what comes off pavement would be compromised as well. So in the infiltration basins, what we did, we tested both in the back and the front. And what we found is once we punched through that fill, we came to beautiful sand and gravel down the lower deck. So which is, and the sand and gravel will accept, you know, a fair amount of runoff and stormwater. So that's what we've done is we captured both the roof and also all the parking lot. We have rows of catch basins along this area. There's a catch basin here, another one there. And the roof runoff portion of this building runs into the infiltration system in this area. And then the balance of the building, actually a small portion of the building is also directed into that wetland, right directly to it. The rationale behind that was is that that rooftop area is clean water. And if we did, we cut off all of the drainage to that well and area, we dry it up. So we calculated how much stormwater we could direct into there while at the same time cutting back the amount of flow that's going to it. Because a lot of what goes there now fills it up in wet weather and then it runs right past and into the residential area. So we did a calculation of how much water we get into this area and help maintain the wetland species that live in there without drying the area up. The balance of the water, the parking lot, the rest of the building are all directed into this larger infiltration basin. And this basin up here is sized to a hundred-year event. There's actually no runoff at all that comes out of it. It recharges everything. The lower basin in here does have, does overtop in the larger storms. But it rains, whatever overtops is directed into that cauldron which runs through the site. The good news of this, we sized it, so there's actually about fifty percent reduction in the large storms and the hundred-year storms. About fifty percent reduction in the peak rates of runoff which flow from the site during the storm. There's also a reduction in the volume of runoff which comes from the site. So I'm not going to make the claims that we've solved whatever problem is in this. It could very well be that there's a blockage downstream from us or something like that. But we certainly have mitigated for any impacts we may have and then some. So there'll be a significant reduction in the amount of flow that comes off of this site. I'll get to Greg's. Greg had a chance to review this. We reviewed it together actually when I submitted it. And then he reviewed the plans with me. He pointed out that there's a new, I won't go through all of them. I'll try to hit the high spots. He pointed out that there's a new, it's called MS four, which is part of the federal government requirements on cities and towns cleaning up their water and it had to do with pathogens. And it just so happened that, and this wasn't planned, I didn't know this until Greg told me about this. But the infiltration systems that we have are, they have sand filters and the Romans used sand filters. They've been around for thousands of years. And they're also what are used in septic systems. They're ideal for capturing pathogens. So that turned out that that was a good thing. Most of the comments that he had was the drainage system. He didn't have, he was happy with the calculations. He had us clarify some points. We, one of the things we used, he understood there was a reduction in the rate of flow. He had us clarify that there was also a reduction in the volume of flow. So we provided him with that information. A lot of things were kind of nuts and bolts. There was a pipe that was running at point oh-four percent, which is just short of a half a percent. So we had wanted that pipe run a loaded steamer. On the infiltration system itself, we've introduced inspection ports, which weren't on there before, which will make it easier to maintain. There's also some of the piping, it's called a, it's called a manifold, which is a pipe on either end of the infiltration system, which allows for the water to be spread further, to be spread evenly across the infiltration system. It just doesn't come in at one pipe. He and I disagreed on that point. I frankly think it works fine with the one pipe. But I defer to his judgment on that. We did introduce a little more piping on there. He, let's see. So a lot of the stuff that he recommended, for example, is that we provide, he noted that we still need a stormwater permit, which he administrates locally. It's an urgent control and stormwater permit, which is, which we go through his office on. Now, he's already done it, but he's pointing out that, he's already done the review, but he's pointing out that we still need to go and get that permit. And actually, that, when he issues that permit is where he gets a lot of teeth in some of his final comments, which is that he wants to inspect the installation of the infiltration basins and he'll condition that in a stormwater permit that he wants to ask Bill Drines at the end of it. And that's about his permit. And then he had several comments, which are a little bit beyond, certainly beyond the scope of the Conservation Commission. But he was looking for, for example, more details on some things. For example, the size of the water main going into the building. We don't have an M E P on board yet. We're in the permitting phase. An M E P being a mechanic, electrical, plumbing engineer in fire protection in this case. We haven't sized the fire protection line coming in. And that gets done when we go to construction phase and that gets worked out as we go to a, to get a building permit. So he needs bringing up some, I think he's really just reminding us, don't forget about this stuff when you go to the building permit. You know, there was really three things that were split, splitting up. Some of this was kind of narrative, direction to the Conservation Commission. Some of it was commenting on how to make my drainage system a little bit better and providing him with additional information so he felt comfortable with his design. And then the last part was just his oversight under that stormwater permit. And then actually, fourth thing, the comments about what will eventually become issues with the building permit. So even though there's thirty-six comments, there really, there wasn't a lot here that we had to change to address those comments. to address those comments. We refiled, we filed revised plans and responses to these letters with Greg today. I'm hoping that he's going to review and sign off on this over the next week. We also filed revised plans with the conservation commission with an eye towards the commission approving it next week. And our hope is tonight is that with this, you know, that we've got enough information about the site plan to consider approval of this tonight if there are no other issues. But I think that probably wraps it up. Turn it over to Sam.
For the record, my name is Samuel Gregorio. I'm senior traffic engineer at TEC with a Marts Mass. I'm also a professional engineer in Massachusetts. So back in late March, we filed a traffic impact study with the city that was supplemented by a small letter that was given to the city back on April eighteen, which covered smaller base of comments that came out of the park and traffic commission. Of course, we've already heard about the size of the site, ninety residential units, nineteen hundred square feet specialty retail, one hundred eight parking spaces on site, seven on-street parking spaces along Rancho Street in front of the site. We've gotten from the park and traffic commissions, the little traffic study area that's shown on the map, developed on the left side of the screen, but it's Rancho and Elliot to the south up towards Cabot, Colon Street and Rancho to the north. And that covers the area of, certain immediate impact, which you get beyond that point and probably gets dispersed pretty good by the roadway systems in the area. We conducted private trunks along these intersections back in early March while school was in session, so before the spring break to bring the call of specifically sales paid towards the south. These counts were supplemented actually in early April as well, whom we're looking at Lennox Street specifically. So those were April fifth and sixth, though I brought the tapes directly up on the screen. With those counts, we forecast into the future year, this is taking into account improvements that MasCOT is doing on Rancho Street, so back in for a conversation with Nosec Corporation on exactly how their schedule is working and how exactly their pricing and availability implementing as part of the project are going in. So all the information that you will see in the traffic study pertaining to the capacity analysis for the future year does incorporate those MasCOT improvements. In terms of the actual impact from the site itself, we took a modest transit credit. Obviously, we are very close to both the T stations on both sides of the site. Fifteen percent of the total residential traffic, we assume, would be using the transits, and that's actually a pretty low percentage compared to the other transfer-oriented developments in the area just for that comparison, Assembly Square. And obviously, it's on the orange line, but they use a forty-seven percent of their trips for associated transit. So we've kept that low to make sure that we can still account for those overflow kind of traffic volumes that are hitting onto Rancho Street. Generally, for the impact of the weekday morning peak hour, nine entering trips to the site, thirty-one exiting trips, forty trips total. Evening peak hour, we come up to about fifty-one trips total. Saturday midday peak hour, forty-six new trips to the site, so those are both entering and exiting together. To put it at perspective, the weekday evening, which is the largest of those numbers, that's a little less than one trip per hour. And being the particular land use that it is, an apartment complex as opposed to single unit housing, or especially where we have a gym on site, where we have retail, other retail, generally, also a site perfecting just to the north, for instance, the gym for the kids, which might be a bad example. Those kind of uses written on the site dramatically reduce the amount of traffic compared to single unit housing. And these numbers come out of the IT trip generation data, which is the industry standard across the country, and it takes into account hundreds of residential developments across the country and how they operate during the peak hour, during the daily. With these numbers, we distributed that traffic over the network and over the study area using a journey-to-work model. Obviously, looking at towards those peak hour counters, the most pronounced counter that you see is mix of the high peak volumes on the roadway and the high peak volumes actually leaving your site compared up to the parts of the day. And for this, before that, we use the journey-to-work model that the U.S. Census Bureau comes up with for Beverly specific, so how many residents of Beverly are working or have been working. So our model is based off that for that morning peak hour people are going to work, evening peak hour when they're coming back from work. The general traffic impact, a lot of intersections in the corridor generally do not change, so I'm going to focus on the one that has a little bit of a change. And although we look at the traffic center, you'll see what matters, like level service D and level service E, so a little at average or just a tad bit below. Above that right now, you might not be able to see that if you're looking at Rancho Street right now, it's obviously MasCOT improvements are not complete. So those dramatically increase the capacity with just the bridges protected left turn phase that are going on at the Elliot Street intersection. A lot of left turns to get out from that intersection, and that in turn actually will be reducing some of the traffic that we can see in there as well. But that counted in Colon Street, we will see a small tick up in the delay, and that's short by the second bullet in there, eight second per vehicle delay on the southbound approach of Colon Street. And that's actually easily remedied by some minor traffic timing changes in the signal. So our recommendation is we're going to be working with MasCOT, obviously, before our site goes in, so this will be during their construction phase, and talking with Nosec and their subcontractors, or however they have programmed the signal, to actually adjust the timings with them to incorporate the fact and bring those level services back down to a D or E, or D, where right now they would be operating it out, either with our site or without it. So we'd be making it a little bit easier, because this would actually bring down even less than what actually would operate without this.
Can I ask you? I just have a question. I understand the second bullet, so you're saying that the traffic from this project exiting in the peak hour in the morning causes a delay for traffic coming toward the project?
No, no, no. This is generally, this is the worst case out of all the peak hour periods that we saw. So the eight seconds per vehicle on that one particular movement, which is the southbound left on that street, which is the highest of any other movement, so that's during, I believe, the PM peak hour. So it's cars coming back or aside. The AM would have been less than that. So each the worst of anything that increases out of any of the periods that we made.
Did you say self-bound left on the Elliot Street?
Self-bound left, Cologne on to Cabot before it turns into Rancho. So the intersection right north of the site.
Close to cross.
Where right now it's on the left side of the tracks.
Yeah, so it's the beginning. Coming by the strong, taking a left and then taking a right on to.
So I've got ten cars, it's eighty seconds of delay. Is that how you guys, I mean, eight seconds per car?
It's eight seconds per vehicle increase, and that's without the timing changes that may be recommended. Once the timing recommendations that we do have actually bring it below, actually, the current level that would be with the MasCOT improvements. So and that's based off the counts that we've done. We did counts at a separate time, obviously, the MasCOT would have done counts four or five years ago. And since then, we've seen traffic relatively unchanged in the area. We do have counts, the latest counts that we do on Rancho are back from two thousand and four. That's the last time MasCOT did count on Rancho. And that's about a little bit higher than we have, but that's also before the crash, for which we haven't seen really ballroom to cover anywhere since that time.
Are you going to describe, for those ones who don't know, what the Rancho Street improvements are? Are they going to change the traffic?
At that particular intersection, it's a major overhaul, the way that roadway cars are, instead of two signals, it's all almost upper than there's one. So Rancho Street going north after curves over the tracks instead of becoming two T intersections. So that keeps the major flow of traffic, which is Rancho Street flowing on to one A towards one twenty-eight, has the major movement instead of them having to stop at the red light and then take the left.
Which side of the tracks is that?
That's the east side.
And then this side? For the right?
To the right, too.
Yes.
Trying to word myself, too.
So it just kind of keeps going over the tracks?
It's two T intersections now. It's going to be, it'll be two Ts net later, but the wage-oriented, the Ts will be, we can figure differently, so Rancho will be says the mainline traffic, so they don't have to stop and create a left turn themselves on that major four hundred car movement, three hundred car movement, but now they're down by through movement instead of a left turn. And there's also improvements on that Elliot Street, bringing protected phases for the left turn. So you have to have a green arrow instead of the green ball where you have to wait for the gap in traffic.
I have a question. Do the delays take into account when an actual train is there and the gates are down?
So when we did our analysis, we assumed that the red light that we have programmed in there is based on the fact that a train could go through. We know that it's about two an hour. So over the course of the hour, that dispersed, so that median time around the train, obviously, the delay would be longer, but over the course of the hour, it still disperses all the way out. I don't know if that's good or not.
I did. The queuing when there's a train, because it's a longer delay though, it's pretty significant. So I just was wondering if that included.
And these also incorporate the fact that the MasCOT improvements are in place at the time, where the through movement again, you're not, there's no longer a northbound left turn for you at that intersection. They're now through the left. So they're the mainline range, there's no slowing down to like the five miles an hour to take the left.
Unless there's a train going, then you have to stop. Okay.
I don't have it up on the slide, but one of the other recommendations that we do have, it just came out of the Park and Traffic Commission, even when we were talking about Lennox Street, where there was concern about the cut through Lennox Street. And right now, Lennox Street is almost directly opposite from where our exit drive will be. It's not exactly across, but it's a little offset. So the kind of concern was that would there be cut through traffic from Lennox Street? Now, based on where, we had done a count in early April that looked at the amount of cars that were leaving Lennox Street and where they were coming from from behind, might be, I was the one who was actually doing the count myself. And so this is kind of the amount of cut through traffic that would actually be incorporated into that actually exit movement module in Rancho. It was about a little less than fifty percent of the cars that are actually doing that movement would could be considered cut through traffic coming from usually the neighborhood directly across into the other side of Cabot. Now with that, that doesn't necessarily mean that, even though it's cuts are coming out, that doesn't necessarily mean that our site would be generating any additional. And we say that because our entrance, because Lennox Street is facing Rancho, it really only the entry traffic that would cut through. There's nobody that exit traffic would circle all the way around to come back to west. But the entry traffic, based on where the major corridors are of the work environment, one twenty-eight leading to the west, you wouldn't see a lot of cars coming through the neighborhood directly across, I believe, is Davis Street. You got through, about eighty-five percent of the rooftops in the neighborhood that could be considered as a cut through area are residential, and you don't really see residential for residential traffic. So we believe that our cut through traffic would be, if any, very limited. And right now, the most accurate, some of the traffic that was coming out of that road that would be considered cut through are the school vans, the dump trucks, construction vehicles, a couple of houses that are doing improvements of the house.
So Lennox is one way toward Rancho?
Lennox is one way toward Rancho.
Put the map, you want to put the map back on?
I think, yeah. So it's right here, it's one across. It's the one, it's up in Cabot.
Just remind me again, is all the, is the only parking on site reserved for residences, residential, the only commercial, retail parking available on the street?
And that's, you can do the next slide. Right now, of course, we're requesting a special permit for one hundred eight parking spaces on site. Those one hundred eight are dedicated for the residential uses. Now, being only about a nineteen hundred square foot retail development, that's not a very large redevelopment. But we do have seven parking spaces right in front of the site on street that are being commented, and those are based on the zoning numbers for that particular size and use for retail. The one hundred eight parking site on site, and I know Miranda talked about it a little bit earlier, although ten less than zoning, what we did look at is in the same, one of the same manuals that we did for the grid renovation, industry transportation engineers come up with a parking demand manual, really do differently, using one of the typical demands, suburban, urban, December versus non-December, like retail. Based on the number of units in our site, it projects a peak parking demand of one hundred and eight spaces. Now, that's supplemented with information we got from, provided by Hampton Boston City, of point nine-two cars per resident. I believe it's this area of Beverly, correct? Not the whole town, but it might be.
Yes. I don't know if that slide made it down.
So point nine-two regular cars per unit for Beverly. That would come up with nine units at about eighty-three parking spaces. So we are still providing enough to demand that PITE number, one O E, that's the key number. And that particular, that takes into account, for instance, the version one school visits the crowd. Obviously, if you, these numbers, zero point nine-two numbers really would be based on the residents who live there, but there would be the person who comes in to the crowd. So we want to keep it the I T number at least, to make sure that we can commit any overflow and to make sure, any sort of doubt, that there be no residential parking on any of the side streets for Rancho or anything like that. We want to make sure they all stay on site.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So on your traffic counts, I assume the only counts entering the site would be for residents, residents of the site?
They assume that. Oh, actually, no, I believe. Our parking, the numbers we do have uses the retail numbers for that. So instead of them pulling into the on-street parking, we assume they would use the driveway as that worst case to add a little conservative to the numbers. So the facts that we do have, it would actually probably be a little less.
Is there any, how is it, is it just signage to indicate that it's parking for residents only? Or is there any type of key or anything to put in? No, I'm not saying that's any better. It might be worse, but I just wondered. So people aren't going to the retail sites and going, oh, where do I park? Can I park in here? How are they going to be notified that they can't? Just by signs?
I have a two thousand square foot restaurant. I got sixteen parking spots. I don't have enough parking. So if you have a thriving business, how is Seven going to take care of it? Unless you have another fifteen or twenty spots on the street.
I mean, there are, I.
I go through that right now. It's actually, it becomes a problem for me. I get phone calls, Facebook, parking on the street, we're going to ticket your customers. So I'm just, as a business owner, and if it is a restaurant, and if it is, you're not going to have, it's just not enough. Seven's not enough, unless they're going to be using retail, I mean, residential parking.
Well, I guess I would offer that depending on the time of day, there may be availability for some of that residential parking on site for overflow retail. We're not officially requesting as part of the relief a special permit for shared uses because we don't obviously know what the respective use is. I hear your concern. This project does meet the actual zoning requirement for the commercial slash retail use. So as proposed, we comply with zoning. I'd also point out that Rancho Street corridor, and particularly this corner, and I think this is correct, as a result of the one A improvement, there's going to be significantly more curb that will be available for on-street parking than what is currently there, and that's going to be an improvement and certainly realistically there. We can expect that whatever commercial use we have on site, those parking spaces may be supplemented by other on-street parking.
Is the zoning requirement for commercial retail the same as your restaurant?
It is different for restaurant.
What would your restaurant be?
It's four seats.
Four seats.
Four seats.
For four seats, so.
So effectively, you're prohibited from having a restaurant?
It would have to be a very small-seated restaurant, yes.
And for retail spaces, I'm not sure, but for some reason, I thought for where I was, at the time when I bought the building, it was fifty square feet dedicated for one parking spot, it was fifty square feet to the customer. I don't know if it's still like that today, and that was over twenty years ago.
So the retail's parking requirement is one space per two hundred and seventy-five square feet of gross core area.
Yeah, about sixteen hundred square feet?
Sorry, nineteen hundred square feet. So that proves out to seven.
That's for retail.
That's for retail, correct.
One of my, and we were starting talking about it a moment ago, one of the other recommendations we have, is we recognize that the location of our exit driveway is kind of across from Lennox Street, and right now there's not a lot of oriented block signage for the do-not-enter in one-way facing Rancho. Obviously, we do not want our residents running down, making mistakes of possibly going the wrong way. So one of the things that we do recommend, and I'll put them to the number slide, is put new do-not-enter in one-way signs on both sides of Lennox Street, so that would be facing our residents if they come out the driveway, to make sure that they go the, obviously, probably the first kind of recognize that, oops, this is wrong, but you don't want that to be the first one. So having those supplemental signs up there. And right now, I believe MasCOT does have, it looks like they have the stop line repainted as part of their project on each of the streets going on Rancho on the side streets, which is why that was actually one of the reasons. Which is why I was actually one of the people who was always oriented to the direction of the rest. With that, that covers the traffic portion. I'm assuming there will be more questions.
And can you go left or right exiting the site?
Uh, yes.
As currently planned?
Uh, that is how it's currently set, yes. But again, all the exit traffic will also be on the one driveway itself, which will keep also that extra sight line open for people to not have to worry about the car pulling in next to them, be able to see that. We actually are very lucky on the north side of the driveway where, on the exit, where the bus stop is, which opens up that sight line. Well far from Ran Tool Street, which allows people to also, another bit of bike lane on Ran Tool itself. But allows that car to be able to inch in, further disease and further adapt to itself on Ran Tool. Where we normally would not be able to amend the other driveways on Ran Tool right now, where the car, car gathering on both driveways. You see almost nothing on the side.
I missed this, but did you give us your conclusions on the effect of the old option on traffic? What's of these various implications?
Sure. And obviously, I only was focusing on the one intersection. The many other intersections we did a study, Ran Tool and Elliot Street. Myrtle and Ran Tool, I believe Myrtle and Cabot, and then the major intersections in the north of that Cabot and Ran Tool all coming into one intersection. Outloads, with the exception of the one above, with the Master T improvements in place as well. We're looking at a typical level of surface D, which is not uncommon for an urban area, actually is pretty good for an urban area. Certainly with the Master T improvements actually in place. So that intersection to the north, although we will see a slight increase in the traffic way. We feel that the mitigation that we'll be providing with a single timing improvement, which in coordination with Master T and their project, will bring those levels of service back, finitely back down to if not where we are a little less. And that basically is the summary of the traffic. We don't believe that there is a significant traffic impact at the part of this project.
It's D now and it's going to stay?
It's going to stay. Uh, with the Master T, that's how Master T has it planned out as part of their.
To be a D. So that's what it is.
So no change?
Still change.
Okay.
So can you, in your.
That is the conclusion of our presentation. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Very detailed. Answered a lot of questions from their apps.
I guess at this point, let's say 30. I would like to get to members of the public, but why don't we take 15, 20 minutes? Do members of the board have questions that they would like to ask before we open up? Where's the dumpster area going to be? Good question. Get a train. I'd like to focus on trash.
Chris pointed out that I failed to mention the dumpster location, which is right here in the far corner against the tracks. In an enclosure where a truck would find coming in that day and day.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's no more.
Chairman, I may be better at this. We have some fairly reasonable areas on the site. If they can get some snow removal. But one includes this cut through here, which we think could cause some snow. And when it gets to be significant, we realize we're going to have to truck it, kind of truck it off the site. There are some areas for some general snow. We have that crazy mirror we had two years ago. We would be taking it out mechanical. Thank you.
Just curious to know, because you talked a lot earlier about Windover's vision for transforming Beverly. There's a lot of projects going on. Windover is spearheading. I want you to address for me what else is going on on Ran Tool Street, what is planned. I think that, does Windover have an interest in the Ford dealership, the Press Box site, Casa de Luca? We have a huge building going up right now between Railroad and Pleasant. I know that I tried to address the issue of engaging the street and his opinion is that five-story building on the sidewalk, with Ran Tool Street being as wide as it is, isn't going to create a canyon effect. Personally, I disagree. I think we're seeing it at the other end of Ran Tool Street. I think a lot of the Windover projects are contributing to that. Some of those buildings were large in stature to begin with and were simply repurposed as housing. I think some of the architecture has flowed from that. And we're starting to see a lot of crowding of the street. So I want to know how, the bigger plan. We hear every project, it's only 100 parking spaces, not going to be a big traffic concern. Well, this is 100. Up the street is another 100. Soon there's going to be across the street, there's going to be another 100. Next thing you know, that's 300. And I find it difficult to believe the assumptions we're hearing tonight in a vacuum. And that doesn't even take into account everything else that's going on just on Ran Tool Street, not even CY. And Windover has a big hand in a lot of those projects. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about the master plan, less about the mission statement and more about the practical realities.
So you asked a question about what do we have that works. This might be one of the better slides we can use here. So Enterprise Apartments, 45 units down here is already done. 131 Ran Tool Street, 72 units, that's in construction now, that'll be done in the spring '17.
And that's one between, that we just said, Railroad?
Yes, that's 131.
How many units?
72. Depot 2, as we call it, which is the land that's owned next to Odell Park with the Press Box and Casa de Luca and Enterprise Rent-A-Car. We don't have definitive plans to develop that today. We want to make sure, again, that's a real urban core product to what we're doing. We want to make sure that's done carefully, that's done right, and it's part of a historic district. We don't know what we're going to build there yet. We don't know if it's, we don't know, we don't know. We know it needs a lot of retail. We know it needs, what we feel, we think it needs housing, not solely retail. I don't think it would benefit at all if it were solely housing. So that's, that's the Depot 2 block. Across the street from Odell Park is the Ford dealership. We own the Ford dealership. We don't have plans to develop it today. We've, that has done sketches for 84 units. Mainly because it has an RHD zoning adjacency and it's limited to what it can do. It's two parcels, it's the parking area and the dealership. Without getting into too much detail, we really like the way the dealership actually looks. So I don't want to put a building, I don't want to tear that dealership down and just build something straight up like Jackman Towers. So not to say too much, but we do want to see if we can preserve that dealership. I think what your concerns might be for traffic and people. We think the people are going to drive the business and we think the traffic that comes is going to use the train. They're going to use the bike lanes that the city believes in. They're going to be relying hopefully less on cars. And this is, as I said, is no less than a chicken and egg. If there are good businesses, good grocery stores, good services, good things that people can use in an urban-like environment, they don't need to travel too far. So we think in transit-oriented development, that it's going to become less car-dependent. And the younger generation, we feel, uses ride sharing. We're working with Enterprise Rent-A-Car to do a ride sharing program. They have that in other urban areas in Boston. There are 10 over at the Depot Square block, and we're trying to get them to do a ride sharing program. Doing electric car chargers on these, on these sites, so people can charge their car. So 480 is the other one that's in the works. McKay is almost completed, that will be done in July. We'll have residents there in July.
Can you remind us, please, how many units with McKay?
32. This one being 90. Is finished, that's 38 with no retail.
I'm sorry, did you say?
Burnham.
What park is?
Congress.
Yes, Congress Street. We don't own this, but we were the proponent for recarboning this from 72 units down on the water, down here. The seller is working through some, some issues with the ground right now. But we remain interested in developing that site down there that's been approved for 62 units. So we actually thought less than 72 is a more appropriate use for that site. Talked about Enterprise, I think that's, I think that's it. The MBTA is up to bid. It's an ITV for the MBTA site, the ground in front and the airway is over. To be frank, we don't, we're not sure if we're going to bid on that. We think you can put two units in there, but with all retail on the first floor, on the ground level. But the T is not easy to work with. We don't know if we're going to submit on that. And I don't know what anyone else would submit. There could be a number of other developers interested, so I don't know. But we, as you stated, we are concerned about the recipe for people, housing, traffic, the whole equation. But we do think it works because, and specifically, the train is there. And the 20-minute, 25-minute ride to Boston, we think it's going to be more and more attractive to people, the young professionals that commute and or retirees that use it socially.
Because my concern, a large picture, is, you know, your talk, it's even part of your mission statement, is the urbanization of Beverly. I for one am in favor of that. However, that is, obviously, I think the master plan allows for it, the zoning allows for it. So I suppose that, Windover being such a large player in Beverly, it's important to hear that there is a larger vision. You know, not just cliches and platitudes. I think your idea of calling on some technology and the idea of the electric car chargers, I don't think we saw anything like that. At 480, the idea of promoting live work, a lot of younger folks that may rent these, work from home, creating spaces within your units to encourage that. And anything that can be done to encourage people to actually use the MBTA. Six tenths of a mile, it's, it's, it sounds close, but it's not when you're running late and it's a lot easier to jump in the car. And, you know, anything that can be done, whether it's bike, you know, you're talking about the urbanization. We're not seeing some of those things that we see in Boston, the bike sharing.
Right.
The car sharing at the facility, things like that. So I guess I'm just imploring Windover that as you continue to develop Beverly, that you think about these issues less in a vacuum and more on a grand scale.
Sure.
Because it's impactful as a group.
Sure.
So that's just my little soapbox, which I think.
That was a quick question.
Yes. I have some follow-ups, but I'll save them for later.
Can you give us an idea about demographics? How many human beings do you expect to live here and what will be their ages? Kind of economic breakdown?
In 480, you mean? The 90 units? We see a demographic at Burnham, which is our only data point that is, we know is live and real. Young professionals, people that work in the area. Some commute to Boston, but they, they work in the area. New out of school, newly married, so younger, 18 to 35. We also see a population of retirees that have connections to the North Shore. But they're retired and they've, they've done well, they want to live somewhere new, they love Beverly. They probably taught or went to McKay. I think we've met everybody who's done that. But they have connections to the North Shore and they see it as a good alternative. With everything Beverly has to offer, the waterfront, the beaches, I mean, the airport, it's got the hospitals, those kinds of services. So we do see an older demographic, but we see younger, 35 and under.
And how many units in these 90 units?
90 units, yeah. So, well, 62 one-beds and 28, two-beds, so.
Well, for instance, how many, how many units are there at Burnham and how many people live there?
38 units at Burnham, and I don't know the exact population. It's still, it's a mix of one and two bedrooms as well. I can get you the number, I don't know if that's in my head.
Yeah, I'm curious. It's a, it's a one-bedroom. Probably there's 1.7 people living there, that I assume. Yeah, I'd like to know that because I assume that most of those adult humans have cars. And I'm trying to make sense of this numbers that, I guess if I've got it right, this zoning requires 1.3 parking spaces per unit?
Per this project. It's one per bedroom is the requirement.
One per bedroom.
That's the requirement. It's not in the Depot overlay district for parking, which is one per unit.
Okay, so how many bedrooms does this?
118.
118.
118 bedrooms, okay. Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up on that. The rents that were quoted earlier, those are for the affordable, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So what do you see the rents being for the less?
We see one-bedrooms currently are in 1650 a month. And we see two-bedrooms can be almost 2,000, 1,900, 1,800, that kind of range, 1,800, 1,950, that kind of range. I mean, the ballpark is there about $2, a little over $2 a square foot, rentable square foot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. So you're applying for a special permit for less than 25% commercial use. What is the percent that's going to be commercial here?
It's just about 2%.
2%.
And by comparison, just, I think this is interesting, 131 Ran Tool Street, which was up there also and had the whole length of the storefront as commercial, was only 8%. So the 25% is a very difficult bar to meet in the CC district if you have buildings that are four stories or higher. And that's just a product of the way the lots are constructed. When you have a lot that's this deep, or 131 Ran Tool Street, it was the same way. Unless you have retail stretching to the back of the lot, which as in the case of 131, didn't make a lot of sense to have retail backing up on Hardy Street. There's, there's a natural number that's much less than 25%. That's what the zoning says, but it allows it to be varied as a special permit. And I think that's one of the reasons why, is a realization that one size does not fit all.
Just going to have a look. Thank you. You know, you talk about the, you made the statement that at the end of this building, you're looking at it to be the exclamation point of this underfill of Ran Tool. It'll be an exclamation point already. I'm having trouble trying to visualize a five, five-story building fitting into that neighborhood based on architecture, building types, building usages. I have a real trouble with that. So help me get my head around that. I mean, four stories to me would seem to be enough. Wifi, other than obviously it's the economy of scale and it's going to probably make the project more profitable for it, to be honest. But try and sell me on the fact that five stories fits in this neighborhood, because I don't think it does.
I have a lawyer answer, but I suspect that that has a design answer and we can hear from both of them if you want to take it.
Sure, of course. I don't think there's any difference between a four and a five-story building in this site, to be honest. At the, at the street line, the cornice at two stories is what the pedestrian and driver generally feel. And that, and that setback wall, whether it's two stories or three stories more, I don't think matters much. You can look at the Cummings Center condominiums, which is essentially a six-story building that came and, you know, I think this is not dissimilar in terms of being a building that is seen fairly widely in an area. We recognize it's a big building and that there's nothing else really around it. And you can't, you can't fit, you can't literally fit a building into this site that's four stories for that matter. You know, the question is, what do you mean by fit? I, I think visually fit? I, I don't think, you could look at the CBS and the gas station and the Jiffy Lube and the Burger King and the, and the single occupancy grooming house and the block building and say, well, how do we fit with that? We don't think we want to fit with that. We think we want to, we want to put a new, we want to put a new statement out that Beverly is changing down that end of Ran Tool Street. And we think we actually do work well with what is across the street in terms of how our cornice lines all work. So I think that's, that's my best answer as to, is not really an attempt to have it fit other than we think the use of the materials and the styling actually does work pretty well generally. The general look and feel of what's, of what's in that area.
Would you indulge me, please, and there's a drawing you had there that's showing the house juxtaposed to the building. One of those is.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking at here. So the apex of that roof. So the apex of that roof, and I know that we're looking at this, you know, it's all based on perspective, but that building seems to me it would fit at least a little bit better in that neighborhood compared to the apexes of some of these buildings down to a fourth floor, fifth floor, to me. It really makes that building jut out to me again, you know? That's really just my opinion.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just have to echo Mr. Madsen's statements. He talked about the Cummings Building, and I voted for it. And now every day when I drive by it, I'm stunned at how big it is and what a monstrosity it is. I have serious concerns that the size of this building is gonna dwarf that neighborhood, both those that are in the immediate, on the immediate across the street on Rantoul Street, and then heading up Myrtle Street and heading up Lennox Street. I think it's too big. This is my opinion, but I, I think, and frankly, you said there's no difference between four and five stories, so let's bring it down to three.
Well, that's fairly an economic, correct, in one and five stories, as you well know. This, this cross-section through the street, there's a, there's a ratio of width of a street to height of a building that places like the Urban Land Institute and others, even the IT look at, in terms of that canyon effect, and we're well within the standards of that. We don't, when you look at the width of Rantoul, which is from here across to the sidewalk and another, and another eight-foot sidewalk here, relative to the height of the building, it does not push down onto the street. And back to this slide. You took this cornice line, you took that perspective, and you brought that right down this line purposely, because that felt a very important line to us, and then you set this building back purely from that. The zoning does allow for a 55-foot-high building. The master plan suggests this should be an area that has residential and, and mixed use, but within the height of it, within the, considering all the setbacks, the front which Miranda mentioned, and so we don't feel we're out of place here. For us, the lawyer hasn't, hasn't been answered, lawyer has...
It's 55 foot.
Well, I, I think in listening to this, this is, this is a great debate, first of all, right? This goes to the heart of what is Beverly? Is it city, is it town, is it urban, is it country, is it suburb? What is it? And it's a lot of different things, right? But we are talking about Rantoul Street, we're talking about the CC zoning district, we're talking about an area that has been studied through the master plan process and is, which is sort of an ongoing study, and I know that the planning department is back working hard at that. This has been here now for, for a good long while, and there's, there's a reason for it, as Seth pointed out. This is a street that, from a design perspective, can actually support taller buildings. And we think that this site is appropriate for that. And I think, I'd like to go back for just a minute to... The only other thing that's been permitted on this site, which is right here, which is all small-scale buildings, just like a lot of the other commercial-type buildings that we see along Rantoul Street. It's all commercial, it's all retail. It has, Seth, well, you may not have minded it, but nobody's come along to build it. It doesn't work economically. So as part of what we're doing here is thinking about what is gonna make this part of the city come back to life. And there are folks here, I'm sure you will hear comments, I know that Jim Wallace is here from Main Streets. In my other capacity, I worked hard on Main Streets, on the 2020 plan, and I can tell you that one of the central components of that plan was to bring residential activity to the commercial district in order to ultimately support the type of retail commercial use that can't be supported now, that won't be built now until more people are here. So that, that's the lawyer answer. I think it goes back to the zoning, looking at the use, and what we haven't talked about is just the economics. Right now, what can economically be built there? It's gonna be residential use and it's gonna be of a significant density. And otherwise, I don't think it will be built for quite some time.
Can I ask a question? Why do you want to reserve the right on low-income housing?
Sure. But I did not, I didn't get into a lot of detail on this. Windover, for each of its projects, has complied with the inclusionary zoning, has a right onsite. It's worked great, it's perfect. It, it comes at an economic cost, but the projects, one of the reasons that they're larger is to support that cost among others. Separately from that, Windover has explored with various organizations in the city the prospect of developing a larger affordable project that potentially could satisfy multiple needs. It could satisfy the need for different layers of affordable housing, which these projects typically aren't satisfying. They are serving individuals with, or families with 80% of the average median income.
Which is, is it 60,000 definitely, 70,000?
For a family of three, it's 58,000.
So if, let's say, for instance, Windover decides to take the nine families or the 11 families and send them to Hotolay, does the income ratio come down, or is it the same as it would be if they were gonna rent through Windover?
Well, it ultimately depends on the end of the project, and I think folks may remember the, in the mayor's State of the City address, there was a reference to potentially a larger 4DR project. That was one of the things that was being explored, and that has not come to fruition yet, but there is an expectation that something might happen that would allow additional units to be created off-site. Windover would like to be a part of doing that, we think that could be, and Chris can speak to this. There are no concrete plans yet, but we are not looking by any means to escape the requirement for the inclusion. What we're asking for is to, for the board to entertain us coming back to do what your zoning, what the zoning ordinance allows us to do by special permit, but we just don't have the site yet, and we may not.
Won't that essentially just be, like any special permit, you can seek a modification and later?
Well, the, arguably, yes. Yes. The regulations are somewhat specific that at the time you approve your project, you have to have the inclusion on place.
Which you do.
Which we are doing.
So if you need to come back and move off-site, you could come back without our permission to seek an application to, I don't understand why it needs to be built into this decision.
And at the board's discretion, you don't have to. We are just concerned that in the past, there was, that the timing under the inclusionary regulations, the projects have to line up sort of in sync, and we are acknowledging that they don't at this time, and we just don't want to have the board saying, we approved you, you know, understanding that you would have these 11 units onsite, why are you coming back for this change?
Basically giving us...
And we're just being honest.
You're just telling us you wanted to come back. Okay.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Miranda, I hope you don't mind, but I just have to say that I'm really bothered by the argument about sort of this fear factor. It almost, you're almost suggesting that if we don't allow this, then the, then the site will remain vacant. And it really bothers me that one would think that we should allow something to be built there out of fear that it will remain vacant for some unspecified period of time, if we think that what's being proposed isn't in the best interest of the neighborhood. So that's the first thing. The second factor is you talk about the economic development and, and the numbers and the development costs and things like that. We have no, we have nothing before us that indicates that for this to financially work for Windover, it has to be a five-story building.
Do you want me to address that?
Sure. I should just address the first point first. I'm sorry if it came out that way. I think what I was trying to say is that we have 10 years of history that suggests that very same thing. So I don't think it was intended as a threat, but just to highlight what has already happened.
I have two comments. Mr. Miller, there's 58 people that live at Burnham and 45 parking spaces, and there's adequate parking.
And that's, that was, I'm sorry, how many units?
38 units, yeah, Burnham. Can I answer your question? The economic case, I didn't believe was of significant importance to paint to this panel in very detail, but I'm happy to do it. I know if you take this floor off, it's not gonna work. I know, I ran the numbers, if this was 10,000 square feet of retail instead of 1,900, and if we reduced it to just a 61-unit project as a result of that, the internal rate of return goes from 12 to 5. That's not financeable, no one would invest in that. The return on asset goes from 5.8 to 4.45. So, and that's not financeable, because that's below prevailing cap, cap, cap rates.
Cap rates for apartments are running 4% to 5% now.
But that's not how the appraisers see it. They don't, they don't see it that way. And the banks wouldn't finance it. And if the banks can't finance it, there's no profit. This is not all cash. So it's, I'm happy to give you all the numbers. I can paint multiple scenarios. We know that we've run this with multiple types of bedroom counts, different heights, different sizes, different densities. This is the one that worked so that the banks could get behind it and we think is rentable in connection to what we're seeing at Burnham, because it's really just a step further.
Thank you. Any other questions, members of the public?
I have a whole slew of questions. I don't know if this will be appropriate time to go through them all, or...
Yeah, well, there's, I'm concerned that there are members of the public here, and I'd like to not drag back a second time, not that we necessarily are closing, but I think I'm concerned that people have come out to say their piece, and I've been really looking for questions from the public and comments, less so because we're gonna have time to discuss it. So do you mind if I move it open to the public to discuss?
No, that's fine.
All right. Are the members in the public would like to, I'm gonna go past our usual procedure. You can either ask a question or you can make a comment, but I'd like to hear the members in the public this time. Sorry. You need to give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Dominic Seconddiani, and I'm actually directly across the street, the Hair Salon House from the development. My biggest question is this. They have given up parking spaces. I can tell you exactly how many cars can park on the Windover development side and on my side. I've been there since 1970. There are times that we don't have enough parking because maybe somebody at Dr. Scott's is using our parking space instead of in front of Dr. Scott's, so on and so forth. If the development is gonna have parking and retail in front of their sewers, which is exactly directly across from my establishment, what's gonna happen to me? I mean, I literally fit four cars in front of my, from Lennox Street to Myrtle Street. We at times have to park on Myrtle Street. If this development comes to be, which I'm sure it'll probably happen, my other question is, why is it always allowed to be right on the sidewalk, not pushed back with the parking in front? And somebody, this gentleman made a point. That end of Rantoul Street is not the Salem end of Rantoul Street. There were buildings there that were five or six stories from day one. We don't have them down there. I came to meetings when Mr. Searpah wanted his development. After a few meetings, it was allowed. It was great. I mean, I was kind of looking forward to it, in my, you know, my point of view, because he had parking in front, it wasn't gonna infringe on my parking and all the rest of the parking on Rantoul Street. You've got a five-story building. Keep adding five-story buildings on Rantoul Street, you might as well be in New York City. I mean, Simson. Why do we have to be on the street? You've got the same square footage, you could push it back with the parking in front versus the parking in the rear and the building in front.
Want to address those points?
You don't have to. Go ahead.
The, I mean, the state-of-the-art of good urban design is to create an active streetscape, and when you have buildings separated from the street by parking lots, it's not particularly pedestrian-friendly. So when we first started drawing this building, we immediately put the building on the street. I think CBS is a good example of a suburban building in an urban area where you have a building surrounded by asphalt and an iron fence that keeps pedestrians out. I would argue if that building had been pulled to the street and to the corner, folks would walk down Rantoul Street and go into the drugstore as opposed to having to navigate around. So that, that's really the reason. We don't think it made a lot of sense to have a big parking lot in front of the building. The planning department frankly would, would not have been happy with this. One thing somewhat related, this project is 22,000 feet, which is roughly 25% of the size of our building, and it needed all of the entire site to park that 22,000 square feet of retail and office space. So if you, if you, if our entire first, if our entire 25, if we met the 25% requirement, in other words, we could not have any housing units on our site. So clearly the 25%, something, something is off, and that's, and we do think that the 2,000 square foot, 900 square foot space is the right space, and we do think that this Beverly deserves more on this site than a, than more of a suburban strip mall approach to the, to the design. Yes, that's, this design is wildly convenient for somebody who has a destination, coming in an automobile, to park and go into the building. What we're trying to build is a city where people might walk more, have fewer cars, and engage with the building on the street. So that's why the building is on the street.
Okay, thank you. I think questions were answered. Any other comments or...
My name is Walter Waschuck. I own the property that's across from Nick's on Myrtle Street, number 24. And he's absolutely right on the parking. I mean, there's just enough, there's not enough parking just for the residents themselves. The other thing is, it's parking on one side only, so you're really double up on all the parking. Plus, I just think that the building, I understand, you know, it's 55 feet, but it just, I don't think that neighborhood warrants anything that big.
Can I just ask you, when you say it's parking on one side only, you mean on the side streets or on...
On the side streets.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Myrtle Street goes from Rantoul right up to Cabot, Lennox Street comes down the other way. And I can just imagine something of this size, that those streets are gonna be used very heavily to try to get to Cabot or to move around. As far as the traffic study, and they claim that it's not really gonna impact that, there's days that it's 4 o'clock and the traffic is from Elliot Street to Gloucester Cross. You can't even get out of one of those streets or get into one of those streets. So there will be a big impact with the traffic. And I just think that, I know that the design of the building and everything and what they're trying to do, but I just think the building is just way too big for that area. I mean, we have all the residency that goes from Rantoul right up to Cabot, and from Cabot right up over Prospect Hill and everything else. And, you know, they're showing that the house that's next to that, and they want to take that line to bring it through the building, to bring it over to the new building and everything, which is, is basically the culving line. I don't see where that really has any, any bearing at all on the building. It makes that house, it makes it just look like it's a dwarf. And what is that gonna do to the property value to that house with that building there? What does it do to the property value of that neighborhood? That neighborhood's been, been there for 120 years. That neighborhood's been, been there for a hundred and twenty years, a morgue. And I just think that the building is just, it's too overpowering.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who should be heard?
Hi, I'm Jen Wallace with, I'm the Executive Director of Beverly Main Streets, and I've been before the board before advocating for different projects, primarily because of our downtown twenty-twenty strategic vision for downtown. And we did that in two thousand and ten. We heard from over a thousand people in the community about what they wanted downtown Beverly to be. And there were two key points that came out of that report, for which we hired Kennedy Smith, who used to run the National Main Streets Program. So, someone who's very familiar with downtown revitalization. And two of the key points that we learned was, again, something I've mentioned to the board before, this concept of rooftops before retail. Meaning, if we are going to fill twenty-five percent of a property with commercial space, we have to have enough people living there before that. So, I think building up to that twenty-five percent is a way to kind of think of that. The other key point that we learned and we agreed with was that we do not want Cabot and Ran Tool Street to look alike. We never want Cabot to lose its personality, and we don't want Ran Tool to lose its more industrial kind of feel personality either. So, we identified Ran Tool Street also because of the available properties as the place where we could build those rooftops. So, I don't actually see this as necessarily a one parcel come before the board, get approved. I kind of see this as being part of making that vision happen. The vision is more than a thousand housing units, and that's kind of, you know, that's what everybody pushed for in two thousand and ten. And I think we have been working that plan day after day, and we haven't veered from it. We continue to work that, and I think this, while I do respect people's comments about the height of the building, it is a little stark when you first see it. I look at it as what is the vision for Ran Tool Street? And when all is said and done, it may not look out of scale if we have enough people living there. From a parking standpoint, it's, I've been advocating with the city since the parking garage opened to do more to get people off of Ran Tool Street and into that garage, which is woefully underutilized. So, the city is now engaged in both a housing study and a parking study, which I'm thrilled about because I think we need to get people off of Ran Tool Street, and by people, I mean the commuters, who are also some of the people that are blocking the spaces for our downtown businesses. It happens on both streets. We offer a retail incentives program to attract retailers to downtown Beverly. We're willing to give them up to seventy-five hundred dollars in first-year rent. I've learned a lot about retail decision-making as part of that process. And one thing I'll tell you is that retailers want to be concentrated together. They, and you as a shopper would also probably agree that when you want to go buy something, you want to have some choice. You don't want to have to drive to this store, then get in your car and drive to that store. You like to have choices that are kind of glommed together. And I think that's part of what Chris was trying to say about, you know, where is the concentration of retail going to be? And I think for now, putting it all closer together makes it easier to attract quality retailers that can survive. So, we support that as well. I will also say that, somebody mentioned earlier about the increasing rents from Boston North and West. And we see that, we kind of feel like we are building what other people wish they had. We actually have, we've been working with Darlene and the planning department and the mayor's office on this economic summit that's happening on June first, where Economic and Housing and Economic Development Secretary Jay Ash is coming here to Beverly for a full morning of bragging about what Beverly has from an economic development standpoint. We've never had that opportunity before, but I think it's all kind of tied together in us following this vision and not necessarily looking at it as a parcel-by-parcel decision. So, that's just kind of what the Main Streets perspective is, and I appreciate that you gave us the opportunity to say that. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Madugno. I am one of three trustees of Utility Pot Economy and Trush on the direct of Butter. We're kind of that nice little industrial park that runs along the tracks right behind this property. It's like the square in the left-hand corner. We're happy that something's going to be developed. The land has been empty for quite some time, I would say ten to twelve years. The continuity of the land is lower in one part and higher in the other part. When they clear cut a lot of trees back twelve years ago, we get a ton of runoff and a ton of flooding. My parking lot is totally washed out every time we get a good rainstorm. Besides the fact that they dump up there, and we tried to stop people from dumping and cutting through. So, as one of the co-owners of one of the condominiums and as one of the trustees, we're happy that somebody is willing to develop the property. It's a nice-looking building, so we want to support it. It's a little bit big. But anything that's going to be developed there is going to be a win for us who is the director of Butter. And that's all I get to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Suzie Lahn, Twenty-Quarter Street. Suzie Lahn is my name, and I live at Twenty-Quarter Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I agree with the, that the development. I don't mind that it's up close to the street. I appreciate that it kind of scales back. I think that's nice. It's just a monstrosity. It's too big. You're talking about designing on the human scale. I don't think when you look across the street and you see a whole neighborhood full of wood-framed two-story buildings, that a five-story ninety-unit building is human-scaled compared to that. I just think it's too big. I think the retail size is actually okay. You could bump up that two percent easily by taking off the top story. That would change the, the percentage. Just overall, it's not quite right, and I think that we often fall into the thought process of, well, it's better than what's there. Well, it certainly is better than that vacant lot. But we're going to be living with this for a hundred or more years. Let's make it the right thing for the next hundred years, because something isn't always better than nothing. Let's get the right something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? My name is Gary Brooks. I own property on Elliot Street, which is a condominium around the corner. There are fourteen owners in that, and we had a recent meeting about that. I bought our place on Elliot Street a couple of years, or whenever that big rain was that flooded everything there, and maybe what you're also referring to is all the flooding that occurs there. I appreciate the conscientious effort that they've been putting into designing the water runoff and all too, but before all that, that rain flooded the basement for our condominium and all the, that had to be redone at a major expense. You've got all the drywall, and everything down there was just absolutely ruined for obvious reasons. So, I'm really concerned. I'd like to see, based on what it looked like there, that it was, now we're paving over all that area that could absorb that. And I know we talk about average flows and all too, but what about those circumstances like a few years ago where there was major flooding and all too? That really does need to be addressed, and I appreciate the efforts of the planning board to look at that and make certain that that is addressed, not only for our property, but also for the industrial condominiums back there, that that could be addressed as well too. I am concerned about the parking issues as well too. And I do appreciate the very constructive comments that the panel members have brought forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I don't see why. I would rather decide it tonight, but I'll go along with the motion to...
Motion passes, yes. Okay, thank you. We'll be back next month. Appreciate your presentation. Sorry, no.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a second five minutes. My next order of business is public hearing on the site plan review application. It's a special permit application for Two Hardy Street. Having a motion to recess for public hearing. Second in all favor. Chair votes in favor. Motion passes. Public hearing.
And Johnny, could you read the legal notice, please?
I will. Notice hereby given that under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine and Sections three hundred dash forty-one and three hundred dash ninety-eight of the Beverly zoning ordinance, as we codified in February two thousand and sixteen, Beverly Planning Board will hold concurrent public hearings on Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, during a public meeting that begins at seven P.M. at Beverly City Hall, one ninety-one Cabot Street, Beverly, Mass, relative to special permit application number one fifty dash sixteen and site plan review application number twenty-three dash sixteen, the construction of a three-story, six-two-bedroom unit multifamily dwelling with onsite parking for six cars, in which the residential use comprises one hundred percent of the total floor area of the building. The petitioner is Hardy Street Realty LLC, care of Miranda P. Gooding, Gloucester and Gloucester, L.L.C. Eight Washington Street, Beverly, Mass. The owner is Bates Corp. and Regal Corp., one fifty-nine Railroad Avenue, South Hampton, Mass. The property is located at Two Hardy Street in the CC Depot Parking and Height Overlay Zoning Districts, and is shown on Assessor's Map Five, Lot eighty-two dash A. The applications and plans are on file with Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm Michael Desette of firm of Gloucester and Gloucester, Miranda's College, and I'm here to represent the applicant for the development of Two Hardy Street, as you heard, into a hundred percent residential use in a CC zone, so that the single item of relief that we need by way of special permit is the fact that we do not need the twenty-five percent commercial use in a mixed-use development within CC. I will not need to introduce my support team. You've had them earlier this evening.
Practically family.
This project is a sixty-eight hundred square foot parcel currently vacant behind the construction site of one thirty-one Ran Tool Street at the west corner of Pleasant and Hardy Street. It's difficult to see here, but look closely and you will see it in its most recent use, which is that of a parking lot, which was used by the formerly existing commercial condominium units at one thirty-one Ran Tool before its current redevelopment. This shows you again for context the outline of the one thirty-one building, the surface parking for one thirty-one behind it, and in the upper right-hand corner is the common property line with this site at Two Hardy Street, with your left side being Pleasant Street and Hardy Street being at the top or the back of the one thirty-one outline. We're looking to build a three-story multifamily dwelling consisting of six units, each two-bedroom. And there's onsite parking for six cars, such that dimensionally, height and parking requirements are all met for this zoning district. As I mentioned, the only reason we're here for a special permit in addition to the site plan review is because we wish to put one hundred percent residential use on this corner. And the reason we, we think this is a, an appropriate, indeed, a, a good place for this type of project is it creates a buffer between the Ran Tool Street corridor and the building there, mixed uses there, and the residential neighborhoods across Hardy Street. It also, the way it is designed on the site, creates and forms the corner of Pleasant and Hardy with a structure which is intended to be consistent and compatible with the existing architecture throughout the residential neighborhoods. At this point, I think the person best to speak of the architectural issues for this project is the site architect, Fed.
Good evening, Fed, Semasko, Semaskon, Burbidge, Dodge Street, Beverly. We have a building which we think has, fits well into its context. There's a very rich context in which to fit. As, this is Hardy Street here turning down to Pleasant. The site climbs up the hill and turns and climbs up further. It's at this higher point that we've entered our site here, parking for six cars, one car per unit, which is only requires. We have screened that parking with an upper righty hedge from the neighbor here. We have, as was mentioned by Mike, put the building on the corner where it helps inform that corner with building mass rather than open spaces. As was mentioned, this is currently an open-air parking lot. It's, it has access from this side. There are two units per floor. It's a three-story building. We could do a fifty-five-foot building. We thought perhaps we could give you a break tonight and go with just the three stories. It's under thirty, about thirty-five feet. The format is such that you can leave your apartment and come out of landing here and come down some steps, a kind of a stoop idea, and down onto the sidewalk and get to the train. Or if you're parking here, you can come in, actually excessively up a slight ramp here and into the building. Pretty straightforward. The site plan and the landscape plan is all included here in one. We're using a lot of grasses and things that we can actually put some snow on in off-season. A fairly rich landscape plan shown. There's a wall here to help mediate the grade as, as it goes down the hill. It was noted, I think, in the engineer's letter that we should have five feet from this parking to the parking line, the rear parking line. We have perfectly pushed the lot back, thinking that we had a parking lot that we actually had control over here, but in hindsight, we probably should have just respected the five feet. We would propose that we do that. We have room to do that here, but we, I think we're about three feet. We need to push the parking lot two feet toward Hardy Street. The site is serviced by gas, water, sewer, as we expect a, a site, a site would have. Again, typical floor, there are three floors, all typical side, sort of side-by-side units. It's a common stairway between, units typically have a washer, dryer, and then one bathroom, two bedrooms. For the three floors. There are a lot of these mansard roofs, buildings in the area. I happen to live in one of them on Broadway. Very common topology. There, I believe, there's actually one that could be made to be attractive on the corner of Pleasant and Ran Tool. So, we'd like that, look, it gives you the two-story building, and the third story is, is in the attic. The scale of these individual blocks, we think, is, is good for the rest of the neighborhood. There are some smaller, some of the smaller houses and some of the larger houses. The designer board went through this. It's a little hard to see, there's some, some interesting striping and shingles on the roof and it's very traditional material palette. And traditional detailing, terms of some wider corner boards and some cornice and freeze lines and those kinds of things. That, that, by the way, was the view, looking at it from Pleasant Street, where I mentioned we had built some walls to help get the building to feel like it's on level ground. But yeah, you need to come down these stairs and run down to the tram. On the corner, coming down Pleasant toward Ran Tool, we thought it was important to have some kind of a vertical, I don't know, put a bay window... some kind of a vertical, I don't know, put a bay window right in that corner, and the parking where this gentleman is standing is up on the higher ground here, so he can come right into the building. Charlie?
I can, we probably could, but...
Yeah, a little bit of the site utilities would be great.
Sure. This utilities, how we're gonna use those, there are utilities right in Pleasant Street, water, sewer, gas, electric, which are all readily accessible to be tied in, as you can see in this sketch, the site is completely paved right now. So by placing a house in the parking lot, we're actually introducing additional green space onto it and reducing the rate of runoff just by doing the project. There is one in the parking area, how did you get that? Right here, yeah. Again, this, this is sloping down to the corner, it's actually a catch basin right in this corner, and that will be a drainage pipe that will come down and tie into the, into the existing drainage, which is in Pleasant Street. The engineer alluded to that in his, in his letter, that we've already found this on one thirty-one, that there really is a lot of utilities in Pleasant Street, and we had the comment that he had about making a field decision about where to have the drainage pipe, it's just that, once we, we certainly will be able to tie the drainage pipe, but we're gonna have to try to figure out how to move our way through the existing facilities in the street to make that connection, so it'll be a field, a field decision when we get there. The only other, the comment he commented that he thought we needed an ADA space, but that's not after, it's, it's, the master was, fifteen, you need fifteen spaces before you get into eighty-eight. I don't think there was anything else in that, whether it would be impressive, it's pretty straight ahead, it's pretty simple project.
Could you talk about the lighting kind of section?
I don't think we've got, you know...
Well, there is, there is, well, we don't think we need the light, yeah, we have lighting at, covered entrance, porch, in both parts of the building, there's no parking, no lighting on pickets, it's not much of a residential house, where we think there'll be enough light cast off of the sidewalk coming, from this canopy to find here, but safely along the streetlights that are obviously in the background.
Is there an entrance exit parade for handicapped people, or is that a combination?
Yeah, you actually can, you can come right up here and come into the building directly, without any steps. In fact, you probably can park in this space and access directly to sidewalk to the end. So you could get to the first floor level of them, typically these doors that get into a unit are ample, or for a visitor who may be in a wheelchair to access the unit. The second, third floor are not accessible and are not required to be.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll conclude our formal presentation. If there's any other questions?
Sure. Let's find out, are there questions from members of the board? Ms. Miller?
This is more or less standard question, is the building situated oriented such that it would accept a solar system, and do you have any plans for that?
I don't believe we have any plans for that.
We put solar on all our buildings as much as we can, I don't know if this one would be a contender for that, I don't think there's enough mass, but what we would look at, you could condition it if you want us to do it, they just don't, we have to study, we haven't studied, I don't know if there's enough fiber from the top.
There's a sure, south-facing area, but there's a, there's a large flat spot in here that could have some channels, and the orientation is fine. With the mansards, you do not want, you know, from a visual point of view, you wouldn't want to see a house on, but there's a pretty good-sized flat area, you know, it's that wide by that wide, that could house and house.
Mr. Barrett? I have a few questions. One, the residents of the property have visitors, they'd be parking on the street.
That's correct.
That's correct. And in terms of trash removal, is there a community location, or is it, they just somehow put it around the street, or?
I feel to mention that it's, it's probably both. This is a trash shed that would have barrels enough for full enough capacity to move through the six units.
Okay, and they just put them on the street?
Well, I have a four-unit building right around the corner, and we take the trash out for the four units every Tuesday morning, and I don't know how windows mounted that way, or whether they have service come to get it, but that shed would be adequate for the six.
Okay, I was just wondering if there'd be a trash truck coming and trying to, you know, pull in or pull over, you know, do there?
Probably.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Barrett? Just wanted to, first, I think with the design for this, the exact C I I M last project, I think the design is really great for the neighborhood. Can we just confirm, and not that I doubt you, just a second, that the zoning parking is one space per unit?
Yes.
Because it seems like to me that these are two-bedroom units, and there's six of them, so you're envisioning at least twelve people maybe with a car, and there's six spaces, but is it accurate that the zoning in this area, one space per unit?
Yes, in the parking overlay district, because of its proximity to the depot. So there's more notion.
God love him.
If I may add to that, the city has done a pretty extensive study, and showing that actually, you know, in round numbers, one is just right, it's actually point nine, point nine-two, something like that. Here's one example, if anyone remembers way back when, when the Edwards Building came through here, and then there was this requirement of being two parking spaces per unit. I actually have friends that live in that building, and that parking lot is more than half-empty, twenty-four-seven, issue's not necessary. Just wondering.
May I have questions, before we open up to the public? Ma'am, if you would speak.
I certainly will. I wanted to ask some questions, you don't have to answer them. My name is Liam Carrio, I've lived at Five Hardy Street since nineteen seventy. How would you like to walk, go out the front door and you've got no more sun anymore, because you've got five-story building in front of your house? How would you like it if you can no longer get down your street because the street direction is changed without the residents of either Pleasant or Hardy Street being notified of this change? I've had this, the gentleman from the city come down and check. In order for us, once the street is changed, you get out of driveway, we have blocked, we can't see Pleasant or railroad, that Pleasant, either way, especially if they put this building in, there'll be no way we can see when we back out of our driveway to see the cars coming up either up Pleasant and taking a left, or down Pleasant and taking a right. When the gentleman from the city came, he also said that there was no place put in the plans for stop signs, so you can envision cars coming like this, there's no stop signs. When he stood there with me for over an hour and a half, every single car that went down Hardy Street, not one of them stopped at the stop sign that is there. When you go out during the daytime, or go out anytime, when you, and it's got Pleasant Street blocked off, cars come zipping around Pleasant Street, apodding, and don't even stop at railroad, and I've seen many times where cars have almost smashed into each other coming apodding onto railroad, because there's no stop sign there when they keep touring. And if they put this building in there, you're not going to be able to see oncoming traffic. As it is now, there's utility poles, there's trees there, there's a wall that's at one Hardy Street, so backing out of my driveway, I cannot see oncoming traffic, and therefore my life is being put in jeopardy every time I come out of my driveway.
I don't understand where you live in comparison to the property commission.
Right across the street. I live in Five Hardy, and then there's one. So I'm probably twenty-five, thirty feet from Pleasant Street.
Right there.
And you can't see, you can see the trees and everything there, if they put a house in, you're not gonna be able to see people coming up Pleasant Street.
You're on the other side of the street from this property?
Yes. Now, traffic's gonna be diverted from Pleasant Street down apodding to Railroad Avenue.
How does the existence of this building on the other side?
I can't believe it.
How does the existence of this building on the other side of the street prevent you from seeing traffic coming?
It doesn't at the moment, but when they change the direction of Pleasant Street...
Oh, that's, okay, that's the other project, all right.
And then you're not gonna be able to see when you back out of the driveway, cars that are coming from Pleasant Street down apodding, because right now, when they have to walk off Pleasant Street because they're doing construction, people, it's an awful lot of traffic, they said there's not a lot of traffic, they've done a study, but if people don't have to go from Pleasant Street down to Ran Tool Street, and then cross over and go up Railroad Avenue, go uptown, they're not, they're gonna just keep right down Hardy Street, and you're not gonna be able to see them if you back out of your driveway.
All right, I think I know.
And the other question that you don't have to answer is, how many couples do you know only have one car? And also, I have actually, and on Hardy Street, there's no parking, they're taking away parking on Pleasant Street. If my family comes to visit me, they have to park at the post office and walk up the hill, our friends, anyone that wants to come, but there's no place for me to park or any of the people that live on Hardy Street to park, and now they're taking away more spaces. What is gonna happen to the people that live in the neighborhood and want to park in this? And you've got one car per unit, and you know that most people that's your cars, so where are they gonna park? And where am I gonna park if I happen to have friends, and I'll let them park in my car, so where am I supposed to park my car?
Well, thank you.
My concern is the traffic, and also putting something up that's gonna be a disruption to the view of me getting in and out of my driveway.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter, to speak? I have a question. Does this have to go to the Parking and Traffic Commission, or is there already?
It did.
They did. They recommended.
We, um...
No additional signage or, excuse me, no additional signage or stop signs? So somebody recommended we do additions?
Yeah, and the parking traffic for this project, and also, this discussion occurred after Ran Tool Street, but they, Mary said, you know, you can consider the same thing for Ran Tool, the applicant shall develop and provide information to new tenants of alternative modes of transportation available to residents, including what not limited to the commuter rail, M T A bus, Beverly shuttle service, car, ride-share services, and other non-motorized modes of transportation. So generally asking the applicant to consider transportation demand measures to reduce the need for a car and the single-odd, that was their condition.
Not signage or...
No, I'm not, I'm not sure that came up.
No, actually, that's, the questions of the site didn't come up as...
My question would be because when we did one thirty-one, we went all the way up to intersection of Hardy and Pleasant, and we worked it with a bunch of signs, striking and that, that, they, we sort of prepared that intersection on the fire part.
Yeah, that's what I...
Has that been done? I'm sorry, I don't, we're aware of the question, does that been done?
It will be done in connection with the build-out of one thirty-one.
Then we thought it has.
This, if I may, this is, this kind of shows both the one thirty-one project that was approved and the project, which is the subject tonight, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but there actually is the, for cars traveling up in this direction, there actually is a stop sign proposed right there, so cars moving in this direction will have to stop before they turn onto Hardy Street. So if you can see, it's actually, these are, that's, these are all, that's a sign, that's a sign, these are, there's an extensive sign to bring, it was done just hard at one thirty-one, and there is a stop here, and there's also a, there's some painting here to keep cars from parking at that location. We did reverse, as she referred to, we did reverse the direction of flow of this, and I'm sure that she's seen very heavy traffic right now, I just recently had driven down Railroad Avenue, and this section of the road is closed, so all of the traffic coming down Railroad Avenue is directed onto Hardy, so I think she is seeing a temporary increase in traffic, but once, one thirty-one is done, that traffic should, should not be as bad. And as far as backing out of your driveway, is actually good sightlines where that, this building is set back, someone sitting here can see, before they turn in there, make that stop, they can see right up that street. Whether the traffic's moving in this direction or moving in that direction, I think she has the same risk of backing out of the parking lot, I agree, it's a narrow street, but it's an existing condition, or that whole lot to add. So I noticed that we had a lot of engineering department, have you had a chance to review this? I have. So I take it, there's a reference to the five-foot property line setback parking lot, Mr. Samasko, it's happened, are all the other things mentioned in this letter agreeable? Yeah? Oh, yeah, you know, there's things like, what he's talking about, he mentioned number two, is that the department is a retaining wall, and what that is, is a, if she's hoping... There's, there's an existing retaining wall on Hardy that we're actually going to... There's a retaining wall right along here, and we're gonna break through that, was that driveway, and he's making the point that he wants that removed at least two feet below the grade, so it's really just a point that don't go putting pavement right on top of the old retaining wall, it's really just the detail. We talked about the handicap spaces, again, he's asking for height sizing, which I, same explanation as the last project, that we don't really do that until we get to the building permanent phase. He meant, I mentioned drain manhole, which he mentioned, this catch basin, he mentions the drain manhole out of the street, it'll have to be field-located based upon potential Oh, they got the driveway profile, what he's talking about there, because this is exactly the same detail we used on one thirty-one, is what we do is add, at the current here, rather than have a break where the sidebar comes down and meets a lower grade in the driveway, we bring the driveway up to the sidewalk right, and then, so there's a little, you know, about one foot wide, or maybe two foot wide, or, you know, six-inch-high bump that brings you up, and he's, he's asking me to provide him a detail that shows that a car won't bottom out, it's the exact same detail we used on one thirty-one, he, that, so I'll, I'll give him that detail, and I'll work that out. And then the other things were, were back to his erosion control permit, and just pointing out the fact that we need it, even though it's a small project, we still need it, and that he wants a catch file, that's going to be in, and also still want management maintenance records provided to his office, kind of, the construction of the project, so it's pretty, pretty much...
Just a question, I'm gonna add, when you, in order to move the parking lot five feet away from that lot line, do you have room on the front to move it?
Yeah, yes. As you said, anything else?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay. Any else from members of the board?
Just a brief, a brief comment before you go home. I certainly appreciate you look favorably upon those applicants who don't make me endure flip-chats. Thank you for bringing it, presenting it in this fashion.
Was it my doing? My support team?
Thank you, support team.
Yes?
Ma'am, have a comment? Susan, one twenty-fourth Street again. I believe the matter at hand here is the special permit to not have mixed use, is that correct?
Inside, yes.
In site letter review.
In a site letter review. I support the not doing the mixed, mixed use. I think it's an appropriate place to not have it. I like the design, I like it fits in with the scale, and the overall neighborhood, I just, I want to say something positive tonight. I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Barrett, taking it on this primary, in discussion, all in favor? Chair votes in favor? Hearing's closed. Open to the motion on this matter. Let's do the special permit for this, we have a site plan review.
Done.
So the word of some, some conditions that we referenced from the letters we've received tonight? Nobody wants to make a motion? Not the person who receives?
I guess everyone's talking, look at me.
Take me down.
I wasn't looking, I was pointing. Okay, I would, on the special permit application, I would move that we grant a request for a special permit based on, subject first to the conditions set forth in the comment letters from the town agencies that have, that have weighed in, based on the hearing, clearly needs, rather easily, all the special permit criteria that are listed today to have specific site as an appropriate location for the proposed use, and the character of the adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. There's no factual evidence, or any evidence, that property values will be adversely affected. No undue traffic, and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard or result. That there's adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. There, while there were, there is an objection, I do not think that there was a, an objection from letting property owners based on demonstrable fact, especially after the 131 project is completed, and that adequate and appropriate city services are or will be available for the proposed use. Thank you.
Is there a second to that? Just one or two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes unanimously.
I guess they gotta keep going, since they start. So this is on the site plan review. I move that we grant the, or approve the site plan application, subject to, were there any conditions in the request of our counterparts in the city?
You can make them subject to the same conditions.
Subject to the same conditions as the special permit.
Is there a second? Just one or two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, Tom, if you don't mind, I get a little...
I understand. You deserve it. Thank you. So we have two more items?
Three more items.
Yep, okay. All right, our friends at Sunny Crest Circle, they're being approved, in February, February? They are eagerly awaiting the endorsement of the plans, actually, we didn't work. And the Form G covenant, they've submitted plans, the final plans, which they were only amended to show the sidewalk configuration that we agreed upon. And they have been confirmed by themselves, and the city engineer, they've submitted a Form G covenant that meets all their requirements.
So we just need a motion on acceptance of the one, should we?
Yes.
Making that motion, I am... Is there a second?
Second.
It's actually, it's very quiet today.
I am.
Not sure if it's much better.
She's a bit quiet.
All right, okay. So we moved to the second, we can accept the covenant, the Form G covenant. Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes unanimously.
Was it endorsed, the, what endorsed, that no field?
No.
Yep, there's no.
Six hours.
Oh, they're still three minutes. We have to set a public hearing for site plan review application for the construction of a storage building at the Iron Two site.
It's Stransey's, isn't it?
It is in Stransey's site. You know, it's, it's a ten-year study, they're adding a 4,800 square foot building, but beyond the commercial use there.
On the other side is Stransey's, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you go up the hill.
It's the end of the hill.
You can see from the highway, there's a huge pile of smoke.
Yeah, you can see, it's going to be a, a free-sized storage building on the back of the site. But our site plan trigger is if you add a building on the site, and it's greater than a 30% increase in building, total building area. So even though they have a ten, ten-year study, it's still great to site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we... Site plan review, the public hearing for site plan review application number 124-16 for our next meeting on June 21.
Second. Uh-oh. I'm sure there's a discussion on that, okay? What's up?
All right, so, I know, if you guys don't want to talk about open spaces, you don't have to talk about open spaces, but we did delay it again, but the, this resiliency grant the application is due beginning of June before our next meeting, and they would appreciate a support from the letter of support.
I think we've had more than adequate time to leave the plan. I've read it from one end to the other.
Oh, for the open space, then, okay.
I'm sorry.
So you want to do that one first?
Let's do open space. Has anybody else read it?
I have, I think, I think I've read it.
Okay, has anybody else, one more time?
I told them not to.
All right, let's have a motion to...
Does anybody want to, have a letter?
The letter is...
Great. Okay, Alex.
I have a motion to sign the letter supporting this plan. You have open space, you have... Mr. Barrett, second, by Mr. Hutchison. All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right. And then, so the final item is, and I know, I just mentioned this to you all recently, the planning board's been working, or the planning department and the engineering department have been working to apply for a grant from the open office of coastal zone management for a waterfront resiliency project. And this is a grant, this will fund the first phase, I actually don't know how much it is, I'll have to pick that up. But they are basically looking for a letter of support from all various city departments and agencies, or boards of commissions, just to go along with the grant application.
Is there anybody who's not supporting?
No. Say that again?
We could be the first.
I mean, as far as I'm aware, no one is not supporting it. What is it for, again? It's for a resiliency project, which is basically to study the impacts of climate change.
There's no such thing as climate change.
And, and create strategies to address the impacts of climate change. So the city's writing a grant for it? The city is applying for a grant to a study, and the first phase of it is really going to be based on community, understanding the conditions within outreach, so it's part study and part education. Okay. And they just want letters of support to include with the grant application? Yes. That's pretty standard, I'm a real...
Set a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a support letter from the planning board.
And now the second. Second by Mr. Go, any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
No, I just have a comment. Our next meeting is June 21st, does that sound correct? So Briscoe Middle School has graduation that night, so I will be arriving late. Is that acceptable?
Late by, what do you mean by late?
I don't know how late, I don't know.
When's the graduation, sir?
If it sits, so, could be an hour into the meeting, is that appropriate to still attend, or no?
The hearing's still open, so that would be a problem, because you missed the hearing.
Right, exactly.
It would be time for you to review the transcript or the video, so that would be a problem.
If we voted that night?
Yes, yeah.
Right, exactly. And I have, I don't know, 21 questions regarding that afterward.
Oh, dear.
So, do I just not?
And the session's in the absolute.
You have the option as well? Yeah.
She was going to use Mr. Miller's technological...
Oh, you weren't?
Yeah?
I was thinking of you, yeah. Okay.
Needs a little some tweaking, but I think we could ask you some questions by proxy, but I can't vote against it for you.
Can I, so is there, so I, right, so we're in the hearing of the hearing. So then I...
And I don't know at this point what else might be on the agenda here.
Well, we just put something on the agenda, you mean?
This, the site letter review should not be, take very long. Right. If there are other agenda items, could they be scheduled first, and that be maybe in like an eight o'clock start?
Yes.
Is that a possibility?
I mean, we could.
Although we don't have anything to do, I don't personally want to sit around.
I mean, we could...
Forty-five minutes.
We could entertain the idea of starting later, I think.
Like start at 7:30.
Yeah.
We could do that.
I'd be open to doing that.
Okay, that would be good. I mean, sunset's a lot later.
Can you be here, can you be here, yeah?
I think so.
I mean, there's a lot to ask, come on, too.
No, I think so, because the ceremony starts at 6:00, and there was a dance immediately following, that parents are not allowed to be around for, so I'm assuming it's that or not.
So what do we have, once you move, we can start our deliberation at 7:30.
Okay. Make a motion? I'll make a motion that for the June 21st, 2016 planning board meeting, we start at 7:30.
Second.
You move to second?
Third.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Chair votes in favor? So you have the motion?
Yeah, somebody remind me if I don't do it, but I'll, you reminded me, Catherine, for a reason.
She's making noises.
Right. So I'll just be with you as we get closer to that date, just to see...
I need to tell Phyllis right away, if we schedule this hearing, we gotta put it in posting.
Okay, all right, so should I remind you tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
We are also, we have also scheduled a public hearing, and Jim mentioned that we're conducting a housing plan, we have some CVC funding to study housing need. Our first public hearing is June 16th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, at the Senior Center. Sorry. It's really an informational session, and hopefully, even if you can't be there, you can encourage people to come. I mean, I think the more the merrier. It's informational, a chance to learn, but also to get input. But I think specifically around your, my clear question about low income versus, you know, that's not really low income, that's moderate income, so I think some of that would be helpful.
What I was getting at of what they're trying to do is, I look at that, them reserving the right to move the low-income housing to a lower-income housing.
But it's not low income.
No, no, what, I understand that, at eighty percent, let's say fifty, sixty thousand, I understand that, but if Winoma decides to take their 11 units and move it to, let's say, Harrah Lake, where the rents are even lower, where the income can be even lower than that.
No, their, their restriction is for eighty percent immediate income, which is $60,000 per second. We don't know how that would work out, and I think we have to trust that bridge when we come to it, but I'm saying, I think it's...
They have to make their case.
Yeah. It's, we hope that people will come to the public meeting to both learn and share their opinions.
Can you hear this?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to do a whole campaign probably next week, starting to email all, you know, anyone who is interested.
Thank you.
And only up to June 21st, I mean, 16, 7:00 PM?
It's at 6:00 PM, because the city council budget hearing is at 7:00, so we want to give them some opportunity to come. It's not the hearing, it's there, it's when they sign off on each item in the budget.
6:00 PM, I'm using Senior Center. Okay.
Do I hear a motion, adjourn?
I should adjourn. I'm moved, John.
Okay. All in favor?
Let's do it.
I hear all. Close call.